Okay, we'll do. Yeah, we're discussing. Yeah, okay. Let's see. Yeah.
Capitol City Council meeting for the June 1st order. We begin with a roll call.
Councilmember Norton.
Here.
Councilmember Harland.
Here.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Mayor Bator.
Here. Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just one quick announcement for tonight. We've been informed by our IT staff that our speaking procedures need to be modified and the correct distance to be from the microphone would be something similar to this. So we, our Ps and our Ts will be pronounced properly.
Ed.
Okay, so it fits with Capitola, it's many versions, so hang loose for the meeting and stay at least this far away. So that's our announcement. So with that, city clerk, do we have any additional materials received?
None tonight, thank you.
Okay, and city manager, any additions or releases to the agenda?
Staff has no changes.
With that, we'll move to the public comment period. This is a time when people from the public are allowed to come up and speak for three minutes on any topic that's not on the agenda. Please tell us your name and come to the podium, sir.
I'm Mark Abrahamian. I'm a resident at 416 McCormick. And I was involved this past Saturday with the neighborhood cleanup and I just wanted to share with you that it was a wonderful experience. It was just a positive volunteerism and I think the, I've had a lot of wonderful comments from the neighbors. So with that in mind, I met Jacques and I had a couple of ideas and he encouraged me to present myself today and share these ideas about some community-related needs. Two things in mind is, one would be with the, I guess there was some focus on activities for seniors and I thought that the trout manor, is it? The park would be a wonderful site for lawn bowling in the back part of that. It's very rarely used and I thought like, you know, that'd be a wonderful opportunity for getting the seniors in that part of the park. And the other idea that I had was some park horse exercise structures. These are, in other communities where I've actually participated, they've been a wonderful means of exercising and they're, have low environmental impact. So I thought with some of the park sites we have throughout Capitol, maybe we could put one or two of these structures in each park and I think this would be a good way for the community to move about the community and the exercise qualities speak for itself.
Great.
So that's where to get.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming and really appreciate you getting out and volunteering and encourage more people in Capitola to come out and volunteer for their community. It's, obviously it was a good experience for you and maybe encourage other people to do that and they can have a similar experience. And we'll take those items, bring them up to staff and have discussion and see what happens with those.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much for coming to the meeting, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Bye, sir.
I've seen no more public comments. We'll go ahead and close the public comment period. We'll move on to city council comments.
Yes. Hopefully someone's watching this. Obviously no one's come to the audience, but the exciting budget hearing, we're having our car show this weekend on Saturday and Sunday. You can't miss it because the village will be filled with beautiful cars, restorations, exotics, and antique. So come on down.
Comments?
Yeah, I think two, three fifths of the community, city council were phoning yesterday for Prop S. And I think the agreement of all this is that it really looks good. We phoned up, I don't know how many hundreds of people, but response was great. And I know, Ed, you've done phoning already, but we just happened to be there, Dennis, Steph and I, so it was just an uplifting experience to have all people say, "I already voted and I voted for yes." So I hope everyone else in the audience does the same. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Stephanie?
At the car show on Sunday, the museum is going to have a table there for a pop-up museum. It's kind of an experiment and they would like people to bring 60s-related memorabilia for sort of antique road show and tell kind of experience. So if you have some things you can carry down there and bring to Nell's Kissling at the museum table to show and tell and reminisce about the 60s, please bring some things down there. It's kind of a preview for what we're hoping to have in the fall, which would be a same kind of an event at Jade Street Park where we will have a pop-up museum there and bring your Capitol and memorabilia to share and I don't, we're not going to have anyone there appraising it and that's not going to be there for sale, I don't think. But, you know, we all have stuff that, you know, we can bring and show and we can videotape it and then we got a, we did get a request from a woman who's interested in doing a food truck at Santa Adaria's. And so then I, that made me think, well, maybe at the Jade Street event in the fall, we could have some food trucks there and make it into, at Jade Street, make it into a food truck event also, along with museum event and, anyway, lots of ideas about that. We got an email from Mr. Edgren and I printed out the letter, the article, that the LA firefighters are concerned about cell towers. And so I don't know how widespread this is in California, but they're concerned about the health effects, of course, which we're not allowed to consider. So I don't know whether there's anything that the LA Board of Supervisors are thinking about doing or anything statewide, but let's just keep our ears open and if there's any other ways that we can limit these to non-residential areas or low residential areas, that, let's see if we can't do that. But I'm not sure how we can do it. But anyway, it's an interesting article that the firefighters are getting involved with it.
Great.
Thank you.
City manager, comments?
First thing, I just wanted to let everybody know that Rosedale was paved today, so there was a picture of it from this afternoon. Looks great. I understand the courts, I didn't get all the way down to the courts, but the courts look equally good as well. I think the rest of our comments, we can save to the presentation tonight.
Are they going to sweep Pine Street? Because there's a lot of gravel on it from the trunks or does that just, can we take the street sweeper down there and clean that up?
We can do that, yes.
Yeah.
Three and a half inches of asphalt. That's what the guy said.
It's very nice. I just drove on it. Treasure comments?
No comment.
Any other staff comments or do you want to do those later?
The only other item is about the skate park, which the skate park grand opening is going to be 11 o'clock on Saturday. Maybe you can cover the rest of the details?
Um, the rest of the details, let's see, I'm going to try to, maybe I should have Larry give us the rest of the details on the skate park opening since he's the one handling that. So I get them accurate. Mr. Skate Park.
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. So on Saturday at 11:00 AM, we are going to have the Monte Family Foundation and the family there, so we can do a formal dedication and grand opening of a park. We've informed the skating public down there that we are going to have it closed prior to that, just so we could have a grand opening. The idea, we would, there's going to be some, the Deluxe Foods is going to bring some food along and kind of a short presentation, they're going to, the Monte Foundation will hand the city a check and I think we'll just get the park open. Hopefully we'll get some little kids out there first and see how they like it and then bring the big kids in. But everyone that's watching must remind, everyone that's participating will have to wear a helmet, elbow pads, knee pads. So, thank you. Anything else?
Who's going to enforce it?
There we go. Thank you for that answer.
I mean, really, seriously, are we going to have the community service officers up there or?
And specifically for the grand opening, we're going to be out there making sure that at that time.
Make sure that word gets out, Larry.
Yeah, and that's part of, yeah, and that's part of, we, Public Works Director and myself put up signs today and we talked to a number of folks out there, letting them know that it's going to start to happen. You know, I think it's just, I guess the culture in general doesn't think they need them, but it's going to have to, it's going to have to happen.
Great. I think the important thing is the rules are posted and we're making it very clear that if they show up on Saturday at 11 o'clock for the grand opening, they need to have their safety equipment, including helmet, knee pads and elbow pads.
That's correct.
Okay, we all look forward to that. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. This is, it looks like one item tonight. Is there a motion to, for the consent calendar? So moved. Second, anyone from the public want to pull anything on the consent calendar? Seeing none. Anybody, the council like to pull anything from the consent calendar, which is just the minutes, I believe. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move us to the reason we're here tonight for the General Government Public Hearing on receiving presentation of the 2016 proposed budget.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this is our second budget hearing of the year. Last budget meeting, we presented the budget to council and the council members identified a number of questions or comments or suggestions and ideas for the potential budget. So what we've done is we've grouped all the different comments. They may have been made by one individual council member. They don't represent a consensus at this stage. We've tried to provide some feedback and background and potential costs around those different items. And what we're going to do is we group them into sort of nine different areas. So there's going to be nine little stopping points tonight during the course of the meeting where we're going to be looking for council direction. On each one of these, your direction this evening will not be final. It won't be final until it's incorporated into the final budget, which will be adopted, I expect, on June 16th or incorporated into the fee schedule as well. So with that, I'll turn it over tomorrow.
Mayor, members of council, just to begin, we'll look at the general fund. The proposed budget has a current surplus, so our revenues are greater than expenditures by $20,580. Some items that were brought up at the May 18th hearing for potential inclusion, as well as an additional item from the police department, is the Police Department Multidisciplinary Interview Center. Santa Cruz County is the only county in the state that currently does not have one of these interview centers. It's for youth sexual assault victims. All the agencies can get together, they're only interviewed once, it's less trauma on the victims. The potential for the Espinot Street cleaning, that would be an increase of $10,000.
That's sidewalk, is it?
Sidewalk.
Okay.
Sorry. Sidewalk cleaning. The idea of increasing the stipend for the Ark and Sight idea, so right now Ark and Sight receives $25 per meeting. As referenced, Planning Commission receives $125,000. We estimate, based on three members, two meetings, potentially a month, about $1,000. That's probably a high estimate, but being safe at a thousand. Looking at park exercise equipment would cost about $35,000. That's for four pieces installed. The caveat there is it has to be at a facility that already has ADA access. The Rispin Memorial Bench Program, so expanding the Memorial Bench Program to the Rispin Park, it's zero cost to the city, but we would have ongoing maintenance requirements. And if we replace the bollards on Wharf and Bromer, we're looking at about $2,000. So staff recommendation is to add that $5,615 for the Police Department Multidisciplinary Interview Center and then also any other council priorities at this time. So if we included the interview center, we currently have a balance of just under $15,000.
Well, a couple of questions. Point, points I'd like to just clarify on, the interview center, those are our prorated costs. Everybody else in the county is funding it, the county, the city, so this is, we represent about around 4% of the overall cost for the center, so that's what this is. In addition, it was $125 per meeting for the Planning Commission, not $125,000. Just to be clear, our planning commissioners are not making that much. And the $1,000 increase for Ark and Sight stipends was taking it from 25 to 50 dollars per meeting. So if we went higher than that, you know, if it went to 75 dollars per meeting, it'd be about 1,000. I don't think I have any other clarifications.
Yeah, just a question. When you mentioned we have nine areas we're going to deal with, would it behoove us to deal with each one of those nines individually and then move on to the next one? And would this be one of those nine?
This would be the first of the nine.
Okay. I'd like some opinion from the council, if you like that idea, that we just deal with the nine and move along or do you need to go through everything? I'd just like to hear what you think.
I'm okay dealing with the nine. I have a couple of other things I'd like to add in and we can discuss that out.
Into this category?
Could be, yeah.
Okay. I, I'm of the feeling that I'd like to just deal with them one at a time and move on and if there's another item you'd like to throw in there, I think now's the time to throw it in. And, because what staff's recommending is we have 20,000, we just spent, they're proposing five, which means 14 or I'll say 15 is on the table to be expended. What do you have in your wish list?
No, I'm okay in this category.
Okay, in this category. Stephanie, anything you'd like to throw into this area?
Uh-uh.
Jacques, anything on this area? Right?
I'm a way open to process.
Okay. So is there anything of these other four items that we have here? I'm going to number one, there looks like Espinot sidewalk cleaning, the Ark stipend, the bollards. Anyone want to recommend any of those items?
Well, I want to recommend the first and the second, to be sure.
First and the second would be the street, the sidewalk cleaning?
Sidewalk cleaning and the.
And the stipend?
Yes.
You're okay with that $11,000? Anybody else?
Well, let's just talk about the cleaning for a minute. So are we, we, that's going to be for how many cleanings?
So that's as many as we had, was it?
It'll be what we did last year, I'm assuming.
Yeah, because we took it all on last year.
Quite a bit.
I didn't think it took the cost of $10,000 last year, though, did it?
Good evening, Mayor Council. So last year we did a, increased the cleanings during the busy season, during the summer season, where we're doing two full cleanings, no, one full cleaning every month and then in front of the restaurants every other week. So we were always cleaning. And then we also included some off-season cleaning. We spent $15,000 last year. That was approximately three times what we normally spend out there. So with this addition, I think there's six already in the budget. This would break 16, which would be essentially what we did last year.
That'll be, that'll be the same that you just, as you just described?
Yes.
Every, once a month of big cleaning and every other week in front of the restaurants?
Yes.
And that seemed to be, I think, worked out for everybody last summer?
We are approving the two-year budget here. So you're not even approving this year, you're approving it for next year, going on with this thing.
For this summer.
So it's an additional 10,000 that you're adding to your budget?
There was only six in there before.
Okay, so it's.
Before we set down tonight, there's six.
Okay, we spent 15 last year.
Yeah.
We reduced it to five, is what's being proposed.
Six.
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 And so we're going to add back on basically nine or 10 or between 9 and 10,000 dollars.
Yeah. Any hope of ever getting any money out of the BIA or other businesses down there or we should just drop that?
We're going to hear, we're going to hear from the BIA. We have that agendized, so I think that would be the time to discuss it when the BIA is here and we're approving their next year's budget.
So I don't think it's inappropriate at this point, though, to, from this council or from city manager, to ask them when they come forward that we would like to see them split this budget. I'm not asking for more than that.
I'd say we're going to, we're going to have their, their full attention, are we not? Very shortly.
Correct. It's on the 16th meeting.
Not necessarily split, but to contribute. You said split, but you can.
I think it should be a word from this council or from the city manager asking that before the meeting comes up.
I have no problem with asking or supporting a motion to ask them to contribute. I think the fallback that we all are at is there's that we value the importance of having the sidewalks cleaned and based on that, failure to get any contribution from them, we would move forward with some kind of a, maintain the cleaning we did last year. Is that the sense of everybody else? But I definitely agree with you that we should, you know, explain to them that it, I think, Mr. City Manager, if I'm not correct, it is in their contract that they are responsible for sidewalk cleaning?
I don't think that's exactly the way I'd characterize it. I would characterize it that when they develop the initial scope of what the BIA could do, enhanced sidewalk cleaning was within the purview of what they were formed to do.
Thank you.
It was included in the list of items.
Yeah, I did read that contract. I got the impression that that was going to be one of their responsibilities. So I'm not even sure that the various merchants downtown know that contract, the contact contents. And so, you know, I'd propose that they'd actually be given copies of this so that they know what was agreed upon and, you know, we're not asking for something that they hadn't promised in the past.
I have a meeting with them next week and I'll make sure they all receive copies of that language and are aware of it, where, our position.
So we will send them a message then, from us or from the city, from the city manager, that we would appreciate them splitting the cost on this first, okay?
Contributing.
Before, before, before any meeting with them. In other words, it needs to be done this.
Before the meeting when they're here.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'll make it clear next week.
All right, I'm fine there.
So if my math does right, we have $11,000. Is that the only other thing that you?
Well, no, I think we should put new bollards up. If they're only $1,000 for Wharf Road and $1,000 for Bromer, I think that's, that's worth it.
How long did our bollards last last time and what do the, what do the bike, regular bike riders feel about those tall plastic bollards? I've heard mixed reviews.
I would offer just sort of a cyclist perspective on them is on Wharf Road, I, I don't like them particularly as from the way I ride because unfortunately you can't get a street sweeper behind them, so when you're traveling downhill in the bike path, going around that corner, you can encounter all sorts of debris and you're kind of trapped in there, so.
Is there a good alternative? That works?
So they were, just to give us a little history here, they were installed after three pedestrians or bicyclists, I'm not exactly sure, were struck, one rather seriously in the bike lanes in a short period and it was, we need to put something up there to protect the bike lanes. So we, you know, and at that time the bikes, we had Daniel Kostelik was a member here, was an avid bicyclist and he recommended these. They've been up probably for six or seven years. We haven't had any accidents since then. I do know there's, you know, as the city manager said, the bicyclists don't love it, but it certainly has provided the protection. As far as other alternates, we talked about doing, you know, the rumble strips along the outside. Evidently they tried those on the bike lanes in North Santa Cruz and bicyclists absolutely hated it and they took it out within a month of putting them in. Yeah. So there's no obvious answer. They do make it safer in there, but they also provide a, you know, it's an obstacle for the bicyclists.
Is there any way to periodically hand-sweep that area once a month or whatever? Just, you know, because it never gets street swept. I can see where, especially around the eucalyptus trees on Wharf Road.
Right.
I wouldn't ride a bike there myself. Perhaps.
We can add, I can talk to them about adding that, yeah. And then I think what we're, you know, the $1,000 is we go out and replace them infrequently, but periodically right now. We could do a clean sweep and keep them up. It's important they be able to be able to knock down and bounce back up. We don't want to put any, you know, steel posts or anything like that up. It'd be interesting. So it's just if we have a budget item, we will replace them more often and try and keep them, once they get knocked down and don't bounce up, to replace them.
Sound, I'd be.
Just something more attractive than what we have there, you know, I think. Just because they're all worn out.
Are there, are there prettier ones?
Yeah, they're beat up.
Just.
I have a beholder, I think.
Do we need a motion on these items or just a consensus? Right now I'm hearing a consensus to add the Espinot Street cleaning, the Ark and Sight stipend increase and the bollard replacement, which would basically bring us to a balanced budget. If that's the consensus and you don't need to make a motion, we will be, you know, you will get a chance to take final action on it in the final budget.
Well, I didn't really quite realize how this process was going to go. So as soon as the price tag on what I was proposing gets put at 35,000, that kills it, right? So.
We're not finished with the budget, though. I mean, there's still.
Yeah, well, I'd like to, so, you know, when I heard 35,000, I said, wow, this is like over the top. And I heard the actual pieces of equipment cost around 8,000. So my main point here is I'd like to have a balance of opportunities in the various parks that we have here and I don't see anything for senior citizens. They don't even have a.
With benches to sit on.
Oh, right. This is really great. So we got the seniors we provide this. This is really what I want to hear. Oh, this is great. I love it.
I think the street cleaning is for everyone. It's not just for seniors.
Okay.
After they walk around the park, they need a bench.
So, you know, there's a couple of things that I'm trying to address here. These are pieces of exercise equipment that are well-suited for seniors as they're aging, and it provides the proper kind of exercise for those who need to get out and do things. They're not maybe at a gym or something like that. They like to walk. The other thing that's wonderful about this is depending on where they're placed, and if you put benches there, thank you, Stephanie, if you put benches there, it becomes a social gathering spot. So I see basketball courts, I see tennis courts, now I see a skate park, you know. I see a lot of things, but nothing in this town for seniors, okay? So I would just like to get the council to start focusing on that aspect of our community, which is definitely increasing, you know. So I am, I would never support $35,000 to put four pieces of equipment. I didn't realize that, you know, was going to be a killer here. But I would like to see something from our Park and Recs Department that would address going forward, to come up with some ideas that actually addresses the needs of seniors in this community. And I don't know what that would be. This was a suggestion. I heard about it about four or five years ago. It came out of Europe. And they're quite popular. They're very important aspects of the parks that are, I think it came out of Germany. And it's a, it's a social hub. Seniors go there, they gather and talk, sit on benches, but they also exercise. And these are things that include long, help longevity, help balance control, and things like that. And anything that provides a social aspect also aids in that particular aspect. So I don't know what it would be. I would never agree with 35,000. But if over time we could add pieces of equipment in and maybe make it a part of our park system, I think it would be great for a senior community, uh, community.
I think not four, but a five-piece set would bring it right up around the Monty number. So perhaps the next fireworks donation we get- We'll focus on seniors. We can focus on seniors.
I could go, the young at heart.
Careful. Hold on, I'm getting, I'm getting the eye. Would you like to weigh in on that comment?
Just by way of reference, the Monty Family Foundation Trust, their dedicated purposes to support youth recreation, so.
Maybe we can convince Mark to go with young at heart and-
Young at heart.
Hope for the best.
You know, I-
Because anyone can use these. These are not, I mean, they don't have to be over 65 to use the equipment.
Right. There was a suggestion, I think, just made about parkour or some other kind of event. So maybe the direction is some form of recreation that could be shared by possibly youth, seniors, all categories across the board. And I think the point you make is good. And I also, you know, the other thing you mentioned was possible lawn boy. And I think if my memory serves me right, there is a bocce ball court in part of the Rispin Plan.
It is in the Rispin.
In the plan. And, you know, I would, I wouldn't have a problem with, once the Rispin is completed, if we were, and it's very ADA accessible, if we added some equipment in there, as long as it didn't disrupt the plan or the flow of, of that park. So, I mean, moving forward, I think it's a great idea. I don't know that we've got the funds to do it this year, but-
I could see that, and-
I think we could maybe-
I would like it on our wish list that we actually start thinking about addressing senior needs in our parks, for all the reasons I just talked about.
I think it would be great to talk to Elise in the Recreation Department and get her opinion about this and get her ideas about this, because there, she may have some locations and some suggestions for funding or some other opportunities for senior activities. I think that's great.
So would we be okay with directing staff just to look into potential senior activities, parkour, et cetera, tapping into recreation as a resource?
We can do that.
And also, I might add, Mr. Mayor, that through the senior council, there are grants available. So there is money for this kind of activity.
So with that, are we okay with the consensus of approximately $13,000 being allocated? Dennis?
Memorial benches. Love them. The problem is, is that in the program, we've never accommodated for the fact that they're going to have to last their 50, 60, 70 years. Those plaques, if a bench gets taken away or falls apart, the public pays for the bench to be replaced and the plaque put back on them. So we got to be sure that when we're selling these, any more of these plaques or benches, that we accommodate to some kind of long-term maintenance on the, on these things. And so maybe the prices need to go up a little bit than what they are now, because we have 150 of them out there that we have to do for five lifetimes that we have to take care of. So.
Mayor, Councilmember. So the bench, the plaque program actually does include that if, once the life of the plaque is done, they do have to purchase a new one. That is the policy.
Oh, yes, when they sign up to do that?
It is. Has it always been enforced? Not necessarily all the time, but they do. We've had a couple instances where the folks have wanted to, you know, replace it, and we go in and they do, they have paid for it.
So if the city decides to replace benches, do we contact those people?
Well, if we decide to replace benches because they're gone, I think we put the plaques back. But the bench, the bench itself's, I guess, another, I mainly dealt with the plaques on the wharf. But on the bench, I believe it's still, it's for the life of the bench. So we give them, the person who has the plaque there, first opportunity to purchase a new one.
What is the life of a bench?
Depends on if you re-
Yeah, about 10 years.
Oh, okay, that's, that's short. Okay.
Three finish lines, too.
It, it all depends the location as well.
Point is, is that if it can be absorbed in the cost of the benches, we should make sure that, that we accommodate the city enough to take care of it for a longer period of time.
Yes, absolutely.
I think the thing to keep in mind about the memorial bench program is that it, you know, there's a fair amount of staff work that goes into it. There is, you know, occasionally a plaque will disappear, and then we're going back into old records and trying to contact the folks. So, you know, the programs themselves, it does pay for the cost of the plaque. Is there staff time associated with it? Certainly. And there is the ongoing kind of liability associated with it. So if it's an important program, we've been doing it for years, we can continue to do it, and we can expand it to the Rispin. I just don't want anyone to think that it's, you know, doesn't come at any cost at all.
Yes. And there's other parts to this, too, because we also, we do the brick program down there.
Right.
And some could say that's a memorial into it. And then also, we sell the streetlights. You can buy a streetlight. I don't think you can buy a fire hydrant. But yeah, there's plaques on the streetlights down there.
Well, I, well, the brick program is run-
That was one of the ideas, that was.
And the brick program is run through the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah.
We don't, we're not involved in that piece.
But we are, we are, after it's put in, we're responsible for maintaining the sidewalks.
Yeah, but it's, yeah.
Should we create some kind of a program for benches? I mean, is this a potential line item, or is this a fund, a fund that we should? I mean, when you start mentioning staff time, I'm just wondering if it's something we, if we have 150 benches.
You know, I, I think what we need to do as staff, we need to take a look at the policy, because the policy was adopted when the program was first created, which my, you know, council probably knows better than I do, 20 years ago, 15 years ago?
Somewhere that's-
Somewhere in that, maybe, maybe Lisa Murphy may have done it when she first came here about 14 years ago. So, you know, we're nearing sort of that life cycle, and maybe what we need to do is go back to that policy and really make sure that we're following it, because I think it was actually pretty well-written. The question has been, you know, and it was written to limit the long-term liability to the city. We just got to make sure now that we're nearing that sort of end of life of those first generation, that we're following and we're consistent. So everyone's getting the same message.
We've also allowed plaques now out on the wharf. And so we also have allowed them out back on the wharf. Big storms could lose half of them.
Absolutely.
That should be written right to the-
It is. And the policy is very-
Not responsible for it.
The policy is very clear on that. That it's, if it disappears, or the plaque's no longer, they, they have to replace it. But we do give them first opportunity to replace.
And we were using recycled benches, recycled wood benches, too, for a while. Are we still doing that, purchasing them? Because I think they were cheaper?
We've already run into injury problems with benches that are not in perfect condition.
Somebody get a splinter in her butt?
Yeah. And SUDs, probably successful.
Yeah, the recycled benches, I think we tried a couple of them. They didn't last very long, and they're not sturdy enough to last in here. So we haven't been using them. We've continued to purchase the wood benches that you see out in the Village Town. So I'd just add to the discussion we're having, that the policy that we can review was written after quite a few of the memorial benches were on Espinod, its primary location. So we're continually running into a bench that's been there for many years before the policy was written. And so if that bench gets, you know, deteriorated, we have been replacing it with city funds, but putting the new plaque back on. The newer ones, they've been since that policy, we were trying to reach out to the, to the bench donor and contact them. So we're kind of in this flux. We've been able to maintain the bench program within the existing Public Works Materials Fund. When we need new benches, we've been buying new benches within our existing budgets.
What's the cost of a new bench, Steve?
About $250, I believe, yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we, as a direction to staff, just have them look into our bench policy and see if it's, if it's economically feasible and that, and that we have, and make people clear of what their responsibilities are as far as when we sell them off from now on.
The other problem we have is, is a lot of the times, we can't contact the person who made the original donation, things like that. So then, are we removing it, and then they show up, and their bench is gone. We've, we've erred on their side of keeping the benches that are there there. So maybe we're happy to review it, though.
Okay. Okay. We have direction on item one?
Item one.
Okay.
Need to go.
On to item two.
Okay, item two will be handled by the city manager, looking at the communications that the city has with the community.
Okay. So what came up, one of the council, one council member, Harland, mentioned the possibility of having an additional city newsletter. By way of background, we have approximately between two and three newsletters we've been doing a year over the last several years. We have our two sort of standard. And we also end up doing a special, a special newsletter if there's a specific, particular issue that comes up. The issue around the newsletters is that the cost is not that significant, probably about $5,000, $4,000 per newsletter to send out. There's a fair amount of staff time that goes into producing a document like that. And, you know, we're kind of nearing sort of our administrative bandwidth in terms of being able to get things out the door. So one of the things that I thought we could try to do is take a look at everything that we're already doing as a city in terms of getting information out and trying to consolidate it into sort of a simpler and easier-to-access format. So what I was hoping to do was form a little bit of a tech committee, asking a couple council members and maybe a few members of the public to sit down with staff and take a look at this. And as a first draft, we've added this new button. This is something that some other cities have gone to, just connect with the city of Capitola. And this is intended to really take a look at what we already do as a city in terms of social media and information. But frankly, if you were to go to our website, what we already do right now is found at the back end of a lot of different departmental websites. So for example, if you wanted a rec brochure, you have to go into department, go to the city, go to departments, go to recreation, click on a brochure. If you wanted to sign up for a NICSIL alert, you have to go to the city, you have to go to the police department, you have to go. So this is an attempt to consolidate it. So if you go here, we created this new page, which is connect to us, and we have a number of different links. And one is e-notify. This would be to sign up for different types of email subscriptions from the city. You can get a newsletter, you can get planning commission agendas, city council agendas, our newsletter, and the newest thing, which is the city manager update, which is something that I'm hoping to push out on a monthly basis. Social media, this is again consolidating all the different Facebook sites we have, which is the main city administrative Facebook site, the police department, museum, recreation, and agricultural, as well as Nextdoor, which is a great resource for people to get to know their neighbors and stay in communication. We have contact the city, which is just a simple sort of send an email comment to us. NICSIL to sign up to receive the police department's alerts, which has been a very successful program that our police department's administered. And I think we have, gosh, some significant percentage of the city already signed up for NICSIL report. Crime reports, we put this on here as well. This is nice. This loads up the crime reports map. This is updated in, you know, I don't want to say real time, but as the data come in, so people can see the latest crime and get information about it, whatever might be happening in their neighborhood. The newsletter, what this is, is consolidating all the different newsletters we already have. We have the city newsletter, the biannual, the rec brochure, the historical museums newsletter, city manager's update, and then our wasteline newsletter, which is published in conjunction with Green Waste. The city manager update, I just want to touch on it. This is something, as I mentioned before, I intend to do on a monthly basis, and try to push out kind of information, sort of in a less formal way than our formal newsletter, about kind of what's going on at the city. And again, people can sign up for it, for an email distribution of it, and we do include it in the what's new to let people know that it's there. And then lastly, as I mentioned before, the wasteline newsletter, which you can take a look at here. This comes out, we come out, I think, biannually with this as well, and public, published in conjunction with Green Waste. And it helps get information out about the e-waste and hazardous waste programs that are available to residents. And then lastly, we have a service request to let us know if there's something wrong you want us to do, or the video or meeting agenda via cell files as well. We will be talking also, we're going to be adding relatively soon, Mark Knight's got a demo of it, of our new fiscal transparency website that we're talking about funding in this year's budget, which frankly, I think is going to be a really cool thing. We'll roll out and do a demo in July with the council, and that'll be there as well. So people can see kind of city spending in real time and do some analysis right from their desktop. So going back to the slide, our recommendation on this would be to continue with the two to three newsletters a year, which is in the existing budget, and then form a little bit of a technology, kind of ad hoc committee, city manager committee, and work on communication improvements that we can do within our existing system, monitor the effectiveness, and see if we can basically take what we're already doing today and do it better. Comment?
Yeah. In Vision Capitola, one of the things that came up to the top, in terms of why people like Capitola is our police department. And I really am very happy with the things that our police department, under the leadership of Chief Rudy and his staff, have been doing, especially in terms of community policing. And I would think the community would like to see and know about some of the things that are being done here in that regard. And not just crime reports, but actual things where chief is going to talks, staff are volunteering, or various things, and such like that, that are actually adding to the safety and the vitality of this community. So like I said, in Vision Capitola, that was one of the things that came clearly to the top. And it's because of this kind of activity that it did come to the top. So I would really like to see something in this particular blog, this particular website, or this particular, you know, focusing on various things in the city, something that actually focuses on what the chief does and how that is adding to this community.
Can you put the first, the page up, that's the first page of the city's website?
Homepage.
That, front page. Can we put on the, the webcam so that, somewhere prominent, where you don't have to click on that, but just on the main page, so that people that are going to go, they want to look at Capitola, and then they can see right there that there's a place where they can click right on and get the view of it right there. They're thinking about-
For the meeting?
Pardon?
For the meeting or for the wave camera?
The wave camera.
The wave camera.
Yeah. So they're, they're thinking about going to Santa Cruz County, going to the beach, they're thinking about going, should they go to La Selva, should they go to Aptos, should they go to Capitola, should they go to Santa Cruz? Well, let's, let's look up Capitola. So if they want to click on, make it real quick and easy for them to see how beautiful it is.
How did you get to there, Jim?
Well, that's, that's not a very beautiful picture.
So if you go from, if you go to the main page, you just go here, and then it says, beach and surf cameras, that's right there?
I know, but you have to know to go to the community to get there. I'm just wondering if there's any way we can put that on the main page, so somebody that doesn't have to look around for it can, can get to that quicker.
You know, we can. The question, it's always this conflicting issue with, you know, kind of your homepage of clutter versus how, you know, how you want to display it. And we could take a look and see if there's a nice little surf cam button or logo or something that we could stick in here and do it in an elegant way. You know, my concern is, is if too much information gets put on this homepage, sometimes it buries, it becomes impossible to find anything. So that's, that's the balancing act. But we can take a look at that as part of this little tech committee.
Just something to think about. I mean, I know they're looking at this gorgeous picture, but then if they click on something and really see it in, in, in real time, then they're going to say, let's go to Capitola. That's really beautiful.
I think it's a great comment. I guess where I'm at right now is there's a great suggestion out there to form some kind of a tech committee. And what I'd rather do, rather than us start adding on right now, I would like to, if, if, if council likes the idea of a tech committee-
Look at it.
It would be one of the suggestions we take to the tech committee. If they come back and say, this is good. Because there's a lot to a webpage, like city manager says, back and say, this is good, because there's a lot to a webpage, like city manager says, we don't want clutter, we want it to be efficient. And if a tech committee comes back and says, hey, you know what, we can have a little camera and it doesn't take away from the view, and it might just be you click right on the picture and it opens up the camera, I don't know. But at this point, I think the tech committee is a good idea. I would, is there anybody that, did you like the idea of a tech committee, or is there anybody who'd like to serve on it?
Both.
Both.
Yes?
Yeah.
Michael?
Yeah.
Yes, Stephanie?
No.
No.
I can review, I can review it as a late person.
So, would we be okay with, with creating a tech committee and Councilmember Tran and Termini being on that tech committee?
Yes, Doc. I just want, you know, the sense of the council on the ideas that I presented. Because, you know, if this is what the council would like to see, then, you know, maybe we could talk about how to make it happen.
I think they, the council, each council person needs to send their suggestions with regard to the website, things like the, if you're on the tech committee, I mean, the police thing will come up in the meeting, but send them to the city manager, like, like the single button for the webcam. I'd like to see if there's a way technologically we can have the, the scroll appear on the website. A little trickier, but nobody's watching, you know, charter anymore, so. The scroll is nice, but nobody sees it.
And I think something that was mentioned, city manager said he's going to create this new monthly page, which I think Doc ties into what you're doing. He's going to be getting information, he can get some of that monthly info, could be from the police chief.
There could be a variety of ways to do it. I'm not, I'm not saying it has to be directly from the chief, maybe it could be in your report, monthly report.
Right, and understand, you know, we publish the newsletter, so we're always looking for newsletter topics. I think actually the suggestion's a great one. I've already talked to the police chief, and we already planned our next newsletter to have a little, little bit about what the police, you know, the police in our community. It seems like, frankly, a good idea. And so, you know, I, I don't think, you know, we can talk about the tech committee, but it seems like a good inclusion as room allows in newsletters in the future. I think we've had it in the past, and it would be a, behoove us to do in the future.
I just had a couple of other suggestions.
Sure, go ahead.
The, on another one of the pages where you list the links that you can go to, there's, I want you to consider adding the Friends of the Capitola Library to the list of contacts that you have there of the, that you just showed us before, of other contacts.
Again, these are, these are things that-
So, to consider, just suggestions.
I think the, the suggestion councilman Termini made, we all send our suggestions to this newly formed committee and let them kick that around and bring us back.
Have Larry on it?
I believe that would be the intent. Would probably be two people from the council, city manager, and Larry on that committee. Is that, is that your idea of the committee?
Uh, yeah, you know, I was also thinking of potentially asking someone from the Vision Capitola group, because they had some strong feelings about this as well, but-
That'd be great.
Yeah. Yeah, we can take a look at that. I think, you know, if we're going to start talking about nonprofits, we would, the Friends of the Capitola Library are obviously important partners, but I'm noticing here that we don't have like the Capitola Public Safety Foundation. So, we, we might-
Do they have a newsletter and a?
No, they have a website.
Yeah. And also, the Soquel Creek Water District?
Well, the Chamber of Commerce. There's a lot of sort of the external partners. Am I, am I just not seeing it? Where do you, where do you see it?
We can, we can link them. We have a, we have a-
Community links.
Yeah.
So, that, yes, okay, so there we go. And so, that, this is where we, our Friends of Capitola Branch Library.
And, and also I'd suggest the Soquel Creek Water District, just because we want to probably put out as much information about water conservation and drought tolerant landscaping and planting. So, if there's any link we can put to direct people there to get ideas, that would, I'm sure they appreciate it.
Any other comments on this category?
There's another, there's a link that's missing is, is that the building department, the city has set up a link where you can actually, a website where you can actually go to and, and get the status of your billing permit, but it's not connected to this at all.
Oh, that's a good, good add.
So, how many newsletters did we do last year?
Three.
And, three regular ones, you're not including the one about the hotel?
So, we did two special ones this year, or two regular ones this year, plus a special one about Measure S. The year before, we did two regular ones, plus a special one about the hotel, city hall, parking structure redevelopment. And then the prior year, we did two. So, we've been doing-
I'd be happy to go with three, if we can, if we can do three. But I just feel strongly that there's a lot of people that don't use computers, and they will, they would appreciate getting something to read about what's happening in Capitola. Just what's going on, what's, what roads are we paving next, you know, and let them know that all the great things we're doing. We, you know, at, at the Lead California Cities, they always talk about, present your city in a positive light and promote your city. And that's just, that's the best way to do it, I think, you know, besides looking up stuff on the, on the internet. But I think it's, it's a really valuable tool. It goes to every house, you know everybody's going to get it.
Doc?
So, I think what I hear city manager saying is that there are certain times when we have a special issue, you know, so that, you know, we want to push that out. So, that would motivate a special newsletter. Would, would that work for you?
Well, we've hardly ever done special newsletters. I mean, we always just, usually just do it and, and put all the news and, and, you know, send it out. So, I don't see that we're going to be needing a special, special, you know, you never know what's going to come up, but, you know, in the past, we really haven't done special newsletters. We've just done regular newsletters.
My concern is it's got a $5,000 fee. And, and we just spent $2,000 on Bollards and $1,000 on, on other items, which seems to go a long way. And, and we've already created this tech committee, which I would like to give that a chance to work before I just randomly, I mean, my suggestion, randomly add in another newsletter.
Well, I'm not saying add another one. I'm saying if they, we're saying we do two to three, let's go to, let's do three.
Well, it's two, and then it's, if we add a third, it would be an additional $5,000. Is that how I'm reading this?
So, to be clear, in the six years I've been city manager, we've done special edition newsletters in three of the six years. And so, the other three years, we just did the two. So, that's why we kind of did the two to three. And so, it's been, as council member Tran said, basically, we do the two newsletter cycle, and then if there's a special project or issue that comes up in the community, we, you know, usually find the budget within the department or wherever that issue is generated from to do the third. So, that's my recommendation, is that we stay on that schedule.
You talk of residents, you know, they, they really don't, they're hungry for news, I think. And I think having three would give them that news that they want. You know, you walk, you walk neighborhoods, and they don't, they don't know what's going on around town. They don't know what's going on at the Rissman, or at Monterey Park, or at the Skateboard Park sometimes. And just having, you know, news out there, letting people know what's going on, I think would be, would be, is very valuable.
Well, like I said, I'm, I'm still concerned over the 5,000. And I, I've got suggestions here from the city manager about a monthly newsletter that he's going to create. And we've got this committee that we've just created, we haven't even given it a chance to bring us a suggestion. So, I'm, I'm, I'd like to hear what other people think.
Doc?
One more comment. I think at one time, we talked about putting something in our local newspaper, like the Capitola Times, stuff like that. And I think, Jamie, you looked at some of the rates, that would probably have a pretty good distribution. And it would just be something as a column or something like that.
We, we already do get all our meetings in the Capitola Soquel Times. That was based on your suggestion. We got them, we get them their schedule, they publish all our meeting schedule in, in every edition.
But I'm thinking more in lines of what Stephanie's talking about, you know, more of a newsy thing. So, the meetings are great, because obviously, they're very effective. There's a lot of people here, but I really appreciate that.
Sure.
But I think what Stephanie's talking about, people want to know what's happening in Capitola, and they want to know what's going on with the city. And if that has been an effective way to do this, you know, maybe that's an option instead of carrying the $5,000 and the production time and stuff.
Sure. Like I said, my recommendation, the first thing that I think that we should do is take all the different ways that we develop information for the community and consolidate them and make them easier to find. So, we started to do that on this, on this page here that I demonstrated earlier. In addition, I think that this notion of the, sort of the city manager kind of monthly updates, we can find a lot of different venues to push that out. We push that out, if you saw on our front page, it was in the what's new, people can sign up to receive it. I think council members can help sort of advertise its availability. We can push it out through Nextdoor. There's a lot of different ways. And so, for example, in this first edition, we talked about all the different infrastructure projects, what's being built, what's coming down the pike. We talked about the hearing for the skate park, controversial nature of it, our budget, where we are, and upcoming art and cultural events. So, my recommendation is give this a chance, let's see how this works, let's try to push it out there as best we can. And if at the end of the day, we decide it didn't work. But I think that trying something different to really focus what we're already doing is probably a logical first step.
Well, I think it'll work, it'll work beautifully for computer users. I'm, I'm just concerned about the non-computer users, the people that don't look at computers for this kind of news, but they would read a newsletter that comes in the mail.
Dennis, you have any feelings on this, any opinions?
No, I, I, I think that we're reaching, I, I don't think there's a community in California that has more direct contact for any of its citizens than this one does here. You can come to any city council meeting, you can talk to any council member, you can, you can, you have multimedia sources. There's, if you're not informed, this community is because you haven't looked very far. Because the opportunity is here to find, find the source you're looking for.
So, would that be in support of the status quo, staying where we are right now in a lot of this?
I'm not, I'm fine with Stephanie's suggestion that, that, that we could use three newsletters if, if there's a necessity of that. Let's do the, let's do the subcommittee and make some decisions with that and come back to council with what you recommend.
Okay. Mike, any feelings, similar to Dennis's, or no feeling?
Yeah.
So, are we in consensus for that, to let the-
Yeah, I just don't want to argue about $5,000. That, you know, we-
Well, I'm more concerned, I'm more concerned with 100 hours of staff time.
I don't think it takes 100 hours to put together a newsletter. I mean, I could submit, you know, three articles, but, you know, they don't really want council members to be involved with this. So, you know, I haven't, I've just given them ideas, but I'll give them lots more ideas.
I'm on box two right now, and I've got nine boxes ahead of me, and I'm not sure what's lying in those. And $5,000 in nine boxes could be $50,000 by the end of the night. So, I would just, I would just like to give with the suggestions we have a chance. And if it turns out that the committee says, you know, a third newsletter is the way to go, I think staff could probably, in the case of what happens before, if a situation comes up that we feel we need to generate a newsletter, we find the money. Is that correct?
That's better past practice.
I just propose move the agenda.
You're okay with this proposal, Eric, the way it was? Okay?
Okay, moving on, we'll look at the facilities fund. Just real quickly, in the past, we've allocated about $340,000, $230,000 in the past, and $110,000 this year. In the current proposed budget, we're recommending the Jade Street parking lot at $150,000 and city hall maintenance at $60,000. So, the difference there is $130,000. At the May 18th meeting, the idea, three additional ideas were brought up. One was a community center improvement, city hall bathroom improvements, and the wharf bathroom improvements. So, looking at the community center improvements, as a whole, it's a 10-year facility cost of about $750,000. The recommendation is that we work with the new superintendent, discuss the lease and improvements, including the parking lot. So, the $150,000 that we have planned, we hold off until these discussions happen. The city hall bathroom improvements would be $8,000. That includes the fixtures, flooring, paint, and part of the lobby. And the wharf bathroom improvements are ongoing, so we recommend that those continue.
Question.
So, our recommendation is that we include the city hall bathrooms. So, it'd be a $68,000 budget, continue the wharf bathroom improvements, and then work with the superintendent on the community center.
Did we not secure a long-term lease when we did the gymnasium transfer?
There was no extension of our lease as part of the gymnasium transfer. It was part of the negotiation, but ultimately, at the end of the day, the 2032 date stuck. And the intent was to, for us to develop, frankly, I'll give you a little bit more background on the $750,000. We're just wrapping up a study with an architectural firm that went through and evaluated the community center, kind of, you know, what would it cost, the partitions, a lot of the known sort of problems that we have out there. And the rough costs are looking like about three quarters of a million dollars over the next decade. Obviously, if the city's going to invest that kind of money in the center, we're going to want to know that we have a long-term interest in it. So, it's a conversation to have with the new superintendent.
What about the roof?
The roof, actually, I believe is pretty good. The concrete, yeah, the concrete tiles, the siding is expensive, a lot of siding needed replacement. But the roof itself, the concrete tiles, am I saying that correctly? Yeah, they're apparently holding up quite well.
Okay.
The big-ticket items, partitions, overall plumbing, kitchen, siding, parking lot, those are the big ones.
Just my two cents?
Sure.
Or my $68,000? I am reluctant to delay, once again, some kind of improvement of the wharf bathrooms, even if it's some fixtures and cosmetics. I mean, they are, I've, I've been in better restrooms on construction sites.
Now, we, we are working on those. We started on the women's room last year.
Okay.
Got a new sink in there. I was out there today, looked at them. I've directed the crews, once we get going through the summer, figure out how, if we can do some work this summer on them. I want the floors painted, I want the walls painted, I want the men's room siding changed out.
I'm satisfied, thank you.
And we will do that within our existing budget.
I'd rather not.
And your fixtures in the men's bathroom?
Yes.
I inspected them. They're very old and need to be replaced.
Guys don't care.
The comments? Dennis?
Yes, they, my opinion is that you just tear the building down.
You may get your wish.
Get bathroom out of there and build a new building.
You may get your wish.
Could happen.
Okay, I have a question. Mark, is this, where, where in the, in the budget is the CIP facilities fund? Where am I looking inside the budget?
It's under reserve funds.
It's not to be confused with our CIP road fund, totally different.
What section's that?
It is the yellow tab towards the back of the book.
The last yellow tab.
Yellow tab.
Reserves?
Correct. And it is the very last page of that section, page six.
Okay. So, there you see the proposed $210,000. And with this change, that to add the restrooms here at city hall would be 2018 in the proposed 1617 budget.
So, does this take in all of the city's facilities? This takes in the city hall here, also takes in the corporation yard?
So, this is, yeah, this is a new fund that we set up because we were concerned about the fact that we have so many city facilities that are nearing the end of their life cycle. And so, we started this fund in 1415. And the goal was to look at all the different assets the city had, city hall, corp yard, community center, bathrooms, what am I missing?
Parking lots?
Parking lots, those sort of city facilities and finding a way to set aside funding for them. And we looked at some of the standards about budgeting, you know, a couple percent of their total value each year. We haven't been able to actually hit that. I think that the, some of the recommendations would be probably closer to $300,000 a year going into the facility fund, but we've been doing a heck of a lot better than we ever did in the past by getting, you know, between $100,000 and $150,000 in there. So, this, these are funds that are set aside specifically to take care of the city's buildings and, you know, equipment, not, not equipment, buildings.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this section? We have a consensus on this section to move forward?
Yeah.
That appears to be a yes with no comments, so we can move to the next section.
So, the next section, we'll look at our capital improvements program funding and public works director handling this one.
So, you see the, the proposed funding into the capital improvement program. This is what was presented in last year's budgets. We have $752,000 coming from the general fund, measure of dollars. We have a withholding from the triple flip that's finally closing out of $312,000, and a fund balance from the Pacificco Fund, which paid for the lower parking lot that we're moving. So, the total amount going into the capital improvement program is $1264,047.
Question.
Could you estimate for me how much of that money we'll actually spend in 1617?
Well, looking at this project, so here are the, the proposed allocations. Certainly, we are prepared to move forward if approved, or we get direction that this will be approved with the first two projects, actually giving them out to bid next week. So, we get that $488,000 spent immediately. Fanmar Design, we would begin design work on that. Hooper Beach Stairs is something we could move forward with pretty quickly. Espinault Park, Park Wall, it's going to take a little longer, and I've been asked to look at some alternates for that repair project there. Stockton Bridge, Bridge Assessment, we could spend. So, the $326,000 in the pavement management project bank, that's kind of because we're deferring some projects that we had budgeted this year. And then we also had Fanmar, was supposed to go out and get constructed this year. We don't have enough money for that. So, that, that money is, is a project bank that won't be spent until we make the determination which roads to spend it on. And then the slurry seals is something we hope to do probably next, this time next year, be going out with the slurry seal project.
Do we anticipate paving Fanmar in 1617?
So, this is, not necessarily, no.
No.
Not as the budget had been presented here.
Pretty soon Fanmar's going to be on Capitola Avenue, just so we know.
But we do have the design, which, which opens the door for us to-
You know, the, the big problem we've run into is we've done our estimates, gone through the design, found out our, our original estimates weren't accurate enough. That's what we ran into with our last one. So, we're, we're having to defer projects. And I think it'd be better, we get the designs done, we know what the estimates are when we're coming to you with budgets, we have a much better concept of what our budget amount is.
We've also had a design for Claire Street Traffic Common for 10 years, just so you know.
Claire's is in the plan, isn't it?
Nothing against public works, sorry, public managers.
Mr. Mayor, council members, one of the points I would emphasize here is of the, for those first two projects, those are the additional funding that we talked about for the Rispin and for the PMP. And so that PMP project, if you were able to add the $195,000, would be in total about a $1.2 million pavement project. We would get out to bid next week and it would be for Kennedy, Monterey, Park Avenue pavement. And that would be that project. And we would hope to go to bid, like I said, get authority to bid next week. And then the Rispin project would be the Rispin Park project as we've seen it without the fountain, which we'll have as another item to refer that to the Art and Cultural Commission.
Great, thank you. Questions, Dennis?
Hooper's Beach stairs. I wonder really how important those stairs are to this community and visitors here. It's an easy path, just as easy to walk down the hill to get to the Wharf and come down that way. It comes down to a smaller portion of the beach. This is the third time since I've been in the council that we've tried to put that thing back together. And even when we do, we'll lose it again. It's just a matter of the ocean taking it. I'd rather see that, that money move to the Wharf. That's, if we're going to convince this community that we need to take action to saving our Wharf, we have to convince it by making allocations and showing that we do care at this level. And so that's a perfect place where we can leave the Hooper's Beach stairs like they're maybe four or five years if it needs to stay there. Let's start building our Wharf and rebuilding it. So that $100,000 could easily go over that fund. We at least show, if we go out, if we decide with Measure O to go forward, and we need more of us, we show the community that we have a commitment as a city to, to, to funding the repair and, and the preservation of that Wharf. So I think this is a perfect place to move it out there. I, I don't feel Hooper's Beach is that, stairs is that important to the community?
You know, you can still access Hooper's Beach, and I have to echo what Dennis just said. On an order of magnitude, what's more important with regard to the Wharf? Hooper's Beach Paul's comparison to putting another $100,000 in the Wharf Fund.
I have to disagree. I, 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 I think that right now, I mean, right now, we're prohibited from adding stairs anywhere unless we provide ADA access, okay? So there is no new, the new laws require that any access we provide, Steve, has to be ADA compatible.
Any new path of travel.
So we have this path, which definitely, we have, I don't know what it is up there. There's at least 50, 60 parking places that are up there in that upper parking lot, which a lot of those people that park there directly go to Hooper's Beach. I mean, we can't say that...
You mean the, the parking spaces just before Hooper's Beach, next, right in front of the Wharf?
No, I'm talking up on the hill. The ones up on the hill that access that stairway, the primary users of that stairway.
I think you have to go watch it, though. Very few people use the staircase. Most people walk down to the Wharf in the village.
That's what I think.
We'll watch it for a while and see.
Well, I, what's, what's the Coastal Commission's view on that stairway?
They're very interested in it. We haven't obviously broached the subject of not repairing them with them, so we'd have to talk to them about that.
Jack, go ahead.
What do you mean they're very interested? And if we...
They have contacted me previously and the Community Development Director, asking us what our repair plans are and then, and just asking what our schedule is. So they, they're aware that they're broken and have asked what our schedule is.
Okay, so in a sense, we have competing repair plans. So from their perspective, keeping the Wharf open and viable or keeping the stairway open and viable. And if we didn't repair the stairway right now, that wouldn't be abandonment. So it could be for some time later, right?
Yeah, absolutely, I would think.
We got some coastal conservancy money for that, didn't we, to repair it last time? And I wonder if there's any strings attached to that. I'm not quite ready to get rid of the stairs right now.
Oh, I'm wondering whether we didn't use that money, didn't we redo the, the cliff, the, the railings and the...
We used part of the money...
We had a failure there at the parking spaces. I think that's what we used the conservancy money for.
And we used part of their money before to widen the Wharf when we did that, at, at the base of it. When we were talking about putting the bathroom there. But I think we should keep the stairs for now, fix the stairs.
That's our real ADA path to travel is coming down, even though it exceeds the slope allowed. The stairs certainly aren't ADA. And I think Coastal Commission with coastal access is a far easier and more used coastal access, coming down and making the right turn to Hooper's Beach than it is going down those stairs. It's the choice of most tourists and locals rather than...
I say let's monitor it this summer. Let's fix it, monitor it, and, and then see.
Do we want to, do we want to spend $100,000 on it? Or just monitor it?
No, I'd like to, I'd like to fix the stairs and, and then monitor it and see, see what we want to do in the future. Because they'll probably break, you know, they might break again, but...
No, they will. The ocean winds.
Council members, as a suggestion, and I'm skipping ahead a few slides, but I'll remind council of the discussion we had at the last meeting, which was talking about both the Wharf, the jetty, and the flume as potential items if we were going to talk about a measure of deextension with the community. That, to, to me, the conversation there is about maintaining our beach and public access to our beach in the face of climate change and storms. And, and potentially, the stairs frankly fit into that pretty well. So as a suggestion, you know, one thing to consider would be to kind of include that in the overall package of what we're talking about fixing the stairs, fixing the Wharf, fixing the jetty, fixing the flume, making sure that our beach is there as long as possible with rising sea level. It would be an approach. I mean, we have to talk to the Coastal Conservancy and Coastal Commission about how important it is to them. But, you know, potentially, that would be something to kind of put in the overall package.
And this doesn't, this might not mean, you know, moving this money to the Wharf Fund doesn't mean we're abandoning the stairs. I think what Councilmember Norton is talking about is making a statement as far as how important we feel the Wharf is. And putting zero into the Wharf Fund and putting $100,000 is a whole different statement. You know, I'm not saying abandon the stairs either, just...
Jack, go ahead.
As the stairs are right now, what kind of liability is that? Are people tempted to go down it? And...
They are closed off and signed. I have seen on one occasion, somebody going down them and was able to scamper off the bottom of it. You know, we can improve the closure, but they are adequately closed and signed from a liability standpoint at this point.
Is this item, Mark, this item four is in our group, I, I, one through nine, is this section four? Could, could we come back to four? After we go through the rest of the budget and maybe find out there might be a place where $100,000 might be better spent? So, because, okay, we're just moving on and coming back? Okay, great. Number five.
Sure, so moving on, in the Public Arts Fund, the idea of the welcome to Capital signs being replaced and the Rispin Fountain being public arts was brought up at the last meeting. So staff recommendation is to assign the welcome signs and the Rispin Fountain to the Arts and Culture Commission for consideration and then bring it back to council.
Think that's a good idea?
Yes.
Good. Any other opinions on that?
Excellent idea.
Consensus, next.
Yeah. Maybe we could sell the art in 41st Avenue and help pay for it.
The next section, we'll look at our Special Law Enforcement Service Fund. And Captain Tom Hells here.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. The police department was asked to look into increasing the security features of City Hall and the other buildings, including the parking lots. We did some research and survey of the property and we came up with a proposal to add a security system to City Hall. 16 high-definition cameras that will monitor and record. They will be monitoring the front parking lot, City Hall building, police department, our parking facility, including upper Village Beach parking lot and the front area of the lower parking lot. We would use SLESF funds, the Special Law Enforcement Service Fund, $5,100 that would pay for that. And one other recommendation was to add a combination lock to the break room that's located upstairs. And then, as you're probably aware, our Corporation Yard has experienced a few burglaries. And we are not the only ones in the county to experience those. The latest one was last week and we are currently working some leads in that break-in. So the staff recommendation would be to utilize the SLESF funding to pay for the security cameras to offer more security to our facility. Plus, it would allow some safety out front. We do have several individuals that do child exchange, things like Craigslist. If somebody wanted to make a purchase, they could use the front facility.
One point I'll also add is with the Corp Yard improvements, we, we have already implemented cameras at the Corp Yard as well as an alarm system. Those were installed over the course of the last year due to the break-ins. So we've been catching people on camera with the different Corp Yard break-ins. So that is something we've looked at. Lastly, I'll note, we, we also were able to secure a small grant, a few thousand dollars, but to improve the lighting in the Upper Pat Cove Lot, to get a few more lights up there. So that, that will be coming online in the next year. So the cameras will both be able to help, I think, with safety back down the back lot, and we will have better lighting up there as well. And these SLESF funds have to be spent, remind me, by the end of their fiscal year to fiscal year. So we do need to use them each year.
Correct. And they're for equipment purchases and supplies. Questions?
Good proposal.
Jack?
Captain, I didn't quite understand what you meant about the Craigslist.
People who sell items on Craigslist.
Right.
If they're looking for a secure location, because you don't know who you might be meeting. If they're looking for an area that is recorded or safe in front of the police department, is usually a good spot to make that exchange, especially if you're, you know, it's a high-dollar amount and you're paying for cash, paying with cash.
I didn't know that. Okay, that's, and you mentioned that the upper Pat Cove Lot, the new, I forgot the name, the, the new one in the upper area, there's no cameras planned for there?
Yeah, there is cameras planned for both parking lots.
Both, okay.
Yeah.
And the...
Most of, most of the upper area will be covered with, with what we have proposed now. And the lower area will be toward the front only at this time. We can add cameras. And then, one of the things is the cameras can be adjusted after we install them.
Right.
None of them will be faced toward private property or looking into, you know, individuals' homes. It'll all be on public property.
That's good. And then the, the building where the bikes are stored and all that?
Yeah, our parking office, yeah. We'll have cameras over there also.
Okay, thanks.
Will you stop by and tell Mrs. Sullivan about it too, just so she'll know?
Yes.
Thank you.
She'll appreciate that. Are we in consensus on this? Any other questions? Thank you very much for that presentation.
Another item that was brought up at the May 18th meeting was some updates on current things that departments are doing. So right now, we'll have some department updates, starting with the disaster plan.
I'm not sure if you're aware, but I am, I sit on the Emergency Management Council. I was appointed by the Board of Supervisors and I took that over in 2009. So I attend bimonthly meetings. And one of the items I was tasked with over the last year was to redo our emergency management plan. So I started working on that in fall of last year. I came up with a first draft that has been reviewed by the chief. And after that, we put on a tabletop exercise with the department heads and staff. We ran through a flood, which is probably one of the most likely things that's going to happen. And then currently, I'm working through the review of, of that plan. I needed to add a few more things. I met with the emergency manager, who used to be the county EOC director. He is now with Santa Cruz. We met and we're comparing our plans because we're both updating them. And so I'm working on that. And I'm going to work with him to conduct some training for the specific incident command positions for our department heads. And that's supposed to occur sometime late summer, early fall. And then hopefully, the plan will be completed by early fall. And then I plan on doing another tabletop exercise before winter so we can prepare for wintertime. And most likely, hopefully, we'll have another El Nino so we can get some more water.
Questions, Dennis?
Tom, you go to Hawaii and actually, they're very set up for tsunami warnings, that type of thing. One of the things they have there is they have a siren system that activates. And I think a lot of Guam, there's a lot of places that do, any places on the outer islands and the coast of California. I don't know of any place in California does, but why, why don't we have a... And I'll, I'll tell you, we talked about after the Japanese tsunami a little bit. And one of the things was, well, we'll activate the reverse 911 call thing to everybody. Well, the time, the time you get phone calls out to every person that's down in, in the flats here, the water's up to their bottom lip. I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not a facet... If I, if I was living down in this valley right here, and this is very susceptible to tsunamis, right? Because of its elevation. If I heard that siren go off, I'd be hightailing out of that valley. It, it just, it should be some kind of warning that gives people who live in that, in that vicinity the opportunity to get out of the valley, including our fire department. You know, there should be some kind of system that, when we know tsunami's coming, often it's, you know, within 20 minutes that we're going to have it hit the coast, if not less. There's no way you can get and wake everybody up in that village at night and get them out of there before it happens. So why, why, why isn't there some kind of active noise type of system or other systems besides our telephone to warn people in the...
Well, I, I worked on the, with, with Mr. Jesper, with the tsunami signs. We worked with getting that program together for the entire county. One of the things that did come up was the discussion about the tsunami sirens. I believe, I, I had done some research years ago and we looked into it. I believe San Mateo County may have them. But there is, there is a, a, a cost associated with them, plus the testing and the maintenance, I know is, is, can, can be costly. So if it's something that the council's interested in, we can look into that.
What do signs really do? They don't really tell us, they don't do anything.
Signs are more for the visit, the visitors, so they know that they're in a inundation zone. I mean, most of the people that live in the village know that they're underwater.
Ship's foghorn, we would donate to the police department, put it up on your roof over here.
There was a siren on top of the fire department that stopped work and several years ago. We could ask Central Fire if they want to jump in there. And we have, we have a pretty good warning system as far as advance notice of potential tsunamis because we have significantly more eyes on the coast 25 miles out. So I think we have a pretty good...
How would you, how would you notify people that live in the lowlands here? How would you let them know?
So we, we went through this back in 2011, actually, when we had the tsunami, the Japanese tsunami. And so we activated the reverse 911. And I know that we had our police department out, actually physically, door to door in some neighbors, neighborhoods and with...
With our PA system.
Their PA system.
Those who, who we couldn't contact doing reverse 911, those that wouldn't answer the doors. We went around with our PA systems evacuating.
So we got a terrific drill on this. Now, one of the things about tsunamis is that most of the tsunami threats that we face have a relatively long lead time. I mean, measured in hours, not in minutes. The, the threat that we face, the real dire threat is, is the, the slide on the other side of the Monterey Peninsula. And that's the one, unfortunately, where the lead time is going to be in the course of earthquake, tsunami hits four minutes later. And, and frankly, there, there isn't many situations where we could get a tsunami with only one hour warning. We either get three minutes warning or we get five-plus hours, in which case, the, the system that we have in place, I think, is pretty good. So I think when we've looked at it in the past, the recommendations from staff has always been that the cost associated with the siren and the risk profile that we face and where the siren will come into effect would have to be from that, that tsunami coming 45 minutes away. And that's, there just isn't really a generation source for a tsunami within that timeframe. I'm not sure if that makes sense, but that's, when we've evaluated, that's kind of been our take on...
You have looked at this, huh?
Okay, we have, yes.
I remember the fire department siren and because it used, it used to alert the volunteers to come from their houses and they would come down. Yeah, I hadn't thought about that in a long time, but that was, yeah. I'd be kind of worried about scaring people with a siren.
That's the idea.
Well, you know, and panic and running their cars and getting, getting accidents and stuff. I don't know. You know, I, I can, I can see where, you know, it definitely would get people's attention, but on the other hand, would, does, would it cause panic? And a dangerous situation.
And you have to test, Hawaii, they, they, they test them regularly.
Well, they test them and, and, you know, the residents here are used, are, you know, used to it because they've, they've had that for a few years.
They do it the same time, every day.
I just have a question for information. So in, in the case of an emergency, where is our headquarters, where's our gathering spot for, you know, emergency management?
Our emergency management is going to be the community.
Excuse me? In the community room?
And then if it's a...
And when that's underwater, where's our secondary?
If it's a county-wide emergency, we'll, we'll meet over at the new EOC, which is located at the sheriff's office.
Okay.
And our own backup EOC is the library, if, if it's a flood.
Okay.
The second floor of the new library?
Yes, the second floor of the new library.
All right, all right.
I mean, when, when we do, when we do build our new library, we will, we'll be setting up some space in there for either a primary or a secondary EOC.
That'll be our local one. Okay, great.
But we went through, actually, that was one of the big conversations we had during the tabletop, is where should our primary EOC be? Should it be here or should it be at the library, which is obviously on higher ground? We went through the pros and cons of it and we felt like, look, this is where we're going to come if there is a problem. If we can't be here, then we go to the library.
Library, okay.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Back to you, Mark.
So the sanctuary trail marker status, we are, we have made contact with the artists who put the original sanctuary program together. We are getting pricing. We've met with Councilman Har, Harland and discussed, you know, the kind of the vision we, we have here is putting some along on Cliff Drive. We're trying to figure out, we have a $10,000 budget. We're asked what we're able to purchase for that. It's not going to be a large sculpture like the wave we have down in Espinot Park. It's going to be small, probably, tiles that we can attach on a post or onto the fence to indicate that the sanctuary trail goes down that. So we're actively working on that and hopefully we have something in place in the next couple of months.
Okay, good. Next item?
So the next item came up was an idea to get the hazardous, kind of update about this, the available hazardous waste programs to city residents that we help pay for. And we think that the Wasteline newsletter... And we think that the Wasteline Newsletter that's pushed out through Green Waste is a terrific spot for that, so that can be included in the next Wasteline Newsletter. In addition, there was a question, I think, kind of about, you know, the jetty and the flume. We had a conversation about that. So as we're developing the questions for our polling, there will be questions about sort of maintaining the overall beach in the face of, you know, storm damage and rising seas, so-
Stairways.
Stairways. Yes. Getting, getting all of that, you know, not too much detail, but trying to help the public understand that, you know, our beach is an asset, and it's threatened by what we're seeing. And, you know, we're not denying that there's a threat, and we need to find ways to address it. And so, our recommendation is continue to implement these projects and programs unless there's additional questions.
Questions? Consensus?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, next item.
So, I'd like to quickly run through our fee schedule. We'd like to bring it back to you on the June 16th date, so that they'd be effective with the budget on July 1st. Not too many changes we're recommending. The first one is just an inflationary adjustment that matches the COLA that employees are receiving, so 2.6% across the board on all fees. And then, we have some minor little cleanup items and planning and public work that we kind of missed when we did the comprehensive update, the removing titles. And one fee we had, $5, should have been $50. So just a few little minor changes there. We're proposing adding or changing three fees. So, a new fee would be the administrative decision appeal fee. Our fee study actually looked at this and came up with a total cost recovery of just under $3,100. Staff is recommending about $350 to $500 for these, for that fee. We're also proposing the surf school permit be increased to $500 a year. As referenced, Santa Cruz is currently at $1,500. Our sergeant spends about 40 hours a year processing these, these claims.
And what's our existing fee?
Or permits. Our existing fee is $50.
On the administrative decision, the only, this has actually come up a couple of times, interestingly, in this last year, for the first time for me as city manager, but basically, people appealing staff-level decisions and taking them to the council. What we've been using is this $150 fee, that's basically to appeal a planning commission decision to the city council. It doesn't totally seem appropriate that somebody can walk in and appeal any decision that any staff member makes and get a hearing at the city council for 150 bucks. Obviously, the cost study suggested it's probably closer to $3,100 was the full cost recovery. That seems potentially prohibitive for someone to appeal. So, for example, this administrative decision appeal fee would have been applied to the surf school appeal that you heard earlier this year. And then, there's an appeal of a building permit that was issued for Oak Drive that's going to be coming back to you later this month. And that would, both of those would be subject to this $350 appeal fee. So the balance is between some level of cost recovery on it and some level of keeping it sort of reasonable. So our suggestion is between 350 and 5. You see 350 on the screen there. So, what, the reason we're bringing this up is, in order to do the fee update, we need to notice it 10 days prior. And so, we'd like to get council buy-in about these new fees, the surf school permit change, the administrative decision appeal fee, and then the 2.6 COLA, so we can notice that appropriately for June 16th.
Tom?
In terms of the surf school permit, have we talked to the two businesses in town? Not that we have to, but I'm curious what their response is.
I don't believe staff has, but I do know that that came up during the appeal, in which case, they were in the audience, and they heard the conversation about increasing the fee in the future.
Okay, so they know it's in discussion, okay.
They know what kind of deal it is. Dennis?
Yes, we discussed this once before at the time we're going through the general plan. It's just that the burden of the cost of the general plan is being put specifically on people who build in this town. Well, it's a benefit to everyone. And so, I'll give you an example. I saw a building permit breakdown for a residential project. It was a conversion of a duplex to a triplex that's actually going through the process right now. And the total fee from Building Department for building plan check and for permits was, they totaled out from right as soon as they get the information, was $4,500. The general plan fee for that $4,500 was $900 they were charging them for general plan update. So what's happening is, is we put the burden of, of the general plan, which is a community document that affects everything, not just building, affects everything. We put that whole burden on the shoulders of people who build in this town. There should be another method in which we can, we can raise funds. And besides, you know, we were, we were, we're a little bit shortfall by the amount we spent on the last general plan update. It's, it's really a 20-year document. We'll be doing it again in 20 years. But the amount, the rate that we're collecting money into that, it will be significantly above the cost of ever doing a document again at that cost. So my point is, is that we should really look what's fair in general plan fees, as well as what it will take to, to make, to make up the, a 20-year plan again.
Councilman North, City Council. So, a couple of responses. I think developers who pay that fee do receive a bigger benefit from having an updated general plan than the average member of the public that doesn't develop. One example that I would point to is the recent 38th Avenue application. When they came forward, we were able to rely on a CEQA exemption by virtue of having a recently adopted general plan. That probably saved them in the neighborhood of $5,000. So they realize the real cost savings by the benefit of having a general plan where somebody that's sitting at home and not developing doesn't receive that same benefit. The other thing I would point out is the General Plan Maintenance Fund is available to do, to pay for a number of advanced planning projects. We're currently relying on a lot of those monies to update our zoning code. If we update our local coastal program, that would be eligible. Several of the other implementing plans that we would put together would also be eligible. And we use those monies to subsidize staff time, which otherwise would be coming out of the general fund. So, there are a lot of benefits to having that fund where it is. There's probably a good policy discussion on who pays that for that and what the rate is. But there's a number of, you know, key city services that we do maintain with those monies.
One other point I would add is, I remember when I was Community Development Director, I did ramp down the fee, I think about 10% or something, from .7 to .6, I think, if I remember correctly. I do believe we also, did we look at ramping it down as well?
Yeah, we lowered it in December to half of a percent, so it's .5 of 1% now.
So it has been dropped twice in the last seven years.
Okay. Sit there just for a second, Richard. On the other side, I think that, my experience has been with the cost of plans and permits here in the processing is really low compared to almost every other jurisdiction. It really is. I think that we need to look at our costs per hour for our staff and take a look at raising our fees for these permits. It's not going to, it's not going to push anybody away from the table, because you're more than fair down here, Rich, is what's being charged right now. And you're more than efficient. But I just think that we, we need to look at what other people are charging in other jurisdictions to find out what the right rate is, and making sure that we, we take care of. How close is our Planning and Building Department, or particularly our Building Department, to being, to being almost to the point where it's self-sufficient? In other words, is there, is there such a thing?
Yeah, you know, we did a fee study last year, as you recall, and they did look at that. We are not a full cost recovery department by any means. From memory, I want to say it's more around 50%, but forgive me if that number's off. I haven't looked at it in a while. Ballpark.
Most of that's in planning rather than building, is it not?
Yeah, I mean, building does bring in a substantial amount of money. Planning, a lot of the work we've done is, do is not cost recovery. We don't have an applicant for any of the long-range projects, and that's where the General Plan Maintenance Fee does serve us well. One of the things I would say is, when we went through the fee study, we did evaluate our costs compared to other agencies, the average amount of staff time that's involved in processing a permit. And we did adjust a lot of our rates based on that. The permit types where we lose the most money are the most simple of our permits. For example, tree permits. We lose a lot of time on that. We spend a lot of staff time. And I want to say we charge $70. But it is something that seems a little bit wrong about charging much more than, say, $70 to remove a tree, or a simple sign application where you don't want to charge a permit fee that costs more than the sign itself. So we have some sensitivity to some of those elementary permit types of costing too much. Our more complicated permit types, conditional use permits, subdivisions, you know, commercial remodels, those are all deposit-based and recovered on a time and material basis.
Questions?
Do you have money in there for an intern if we want to get a summer intern?
So, we have had interns for about the last seven or eight months, and we're funding that position largely through the General Plan Maintenance Fee to offload some of the work on Katie's desk, because she's really concentrating on that, and she's helping with that project.
Is that person going to be here this summer?
Well, interns usually are a pretty short-term position. They come, get some experience, move on to bigger and better things. Certainly, if she were to leave and we had a need, we would try to fill it.
Because I have a list of illegal signs I'm going to give you, and I don't want somebody spending a whole lot of their valuable staff time, you know, necessarily contacting. It'd be a perfect job for an intern.
Other questions?
Just maybe, maybe what I'm suggesting is, is that during this next year, we look at our fee schedules for planning and building, becoming a little more self-sufficient in the fact that, I don't think, I don't think anybody's going to fall for a chair one compared to that.
No, I think it's a great suggestion. I would love to see this. Whatever, if we're at 50%, it'd be great to have a goal to get up to 60. I realize we're not going to get up to 100, but I think we should try to collect as much as possible for what it costs us to do something. I don't necessarily agree that we should tamper with the general plan fund. I don't think we have that much tremendous building going on, and like Rich said, some of those funds can be used for other areas. So I'm, I'm okay with that number, but I would, if it, I think it's good for us occasionally to just review the fee schedule and to make sure we're, we're charging appropriately. Any other comments?
No, I agree.
Consensus?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, the last item staff has prepared before we go back and look at the CIP is our Community Grants Program. We currently budgeted $275,000. Our recommendation on the community grants process is to assign members to an ad hoc subcommittee that'll look at reviewing the grants and awarding those grants, recommendations back to council. And then, this subcommittee would also discuss the regional results-based collective impact model.
So you'll recall that the 275 was the recommendation from the prior ad hoc community grant, community grant subcommittee. That was the recommendation. And you'll recall, we have a new process this year, so you're going to budget the amount, and then we're going to get the applications, and then hopefully have a little committee review the applications, and then make a recommendation to the full council. We would do the award in August, the award of the grant in August.
Agreed. Questions?
Yeah, I think this recommendation to have a discussion of the results-based collective impact model is timely, especially in this county. And so, we should be on top of that and have that as a guide, at least so we could reference it when we make our decisions.
Other comments?
What cost of living increase did they get last year and the year before?
Well, last year, they, was the first time in the two-year cycle. So as part of the contract, we gave them the cost of living that the employees got, which I believe was 2.8. I believe it's 2.8 last year, so-
It's a one-year?
Yes. So that, because that was a two-year, they got a two-year contract, and then the second year, we put in a cost of living adjustment.
Right.
Do we go to 2.6? Because that was-
Well, but now we have, it's new contracts.
Well, my point is, that in previous years, they did not get a cost of living increase. And they're really looking at it this year, that they would really like that. They have a staff turnover of 25% in these nonprofit organizations, and they have such a high turnover because their wages are low and their benefit packages are low. So they get good people, but as soon as they, they're trained and get some experience and support, they're probably looking for another job that pays more. And who can blame them? So I think I would really support having a cost of living for them this year to look at that, to, I know they got it last year, but they, to kind of catch up a little bit with the last, I don't know how many years that they, you know, they really didn't get one. They got the allocation, but in many cases, it was the same as they got before.
So this could be reviewed by the ad hoc committee?
Yeah. I just, I wanted the council to think about that, because we have, we, our finances are good this year, and this is the time to look at it.
Question? Dennis, comment? Comments?
I'm not sure, I agree that our finances are good. I think our finances are finally stable. I don't know that we, that I would quantify it as good. I don't know, unless the city manager wants to give me a different direction.
You want me to tell you why I think it's good?
Sure. You can tell me why you think it's good.
Because the general, because of the summary that we received in our, our meeting last month, that the, the sales tax is up, the TOT is up, the parking revenues are up, and we have more money this year, we have a surplus this year. We have more money coming in than we had last year. So this, that's why it's-
Somebody want to put the graph up from our last budget meeting?
Yeah.
Red line on it?
That would be the, I mean, I think that the characterization that this budget year is, is good is, is an accurate one, but I think that the forecast, that's the issue, is that looking ahead, things don't look very good for, for our revenue picture. There's a lot of risks. And so, the concern about, you know, spending money on one-time things, because we are in a one-time good budget, I think is entirely appropriate. The concern is always spending money on things that are ongoing, and usually under this, what ends up happening is, is we end up setting a new base, and it does become an ongoing expenditure. So that's, that's a challenge you have to think about, is, you know, this year is good, but when we look ahead to future years, there's a lot of challenges ahead.
And there's, there's many challenges for these groups too, and I think it would, it would go a long ways towards showing them that we really value them, to give them a cost of living increase.
Councilman Jeremy and I sat on this committee, and, you know, we struggle with this, but I can't find the page. Where's, do you know the page in here where the community grants is on? I'm trying to-
Page 14 of the general fund expenditures? The red tab, second red tab.
Thank you for helping me find that. You know, we gave it a lot of consideration, because what we're trying to do is just try to give them something that they could count on, because it seemed like, page 14?
Yeah, page 14.
I believe you have it open to it, Mayor.
There it is, okay. So we were at 254 in 13, 269, 277. And then, we were just trying to provide stability, I think what it was, was by two back-to-back years of 275, rather than take them back to 254 or 269. I thought that it was a good gesture to give them a stable amount that they look, could look forward to without saying, okay, it's going to be up and down, or, or there were some concerns about tying it to a number. I know there are some provisions, you know, possibly through other agencies that are going to try to increase funding to some of these agencies, so I'm, you know, I felt pretty good with the number that we came up with in that ad hoc committee. That's just my opinion on this.
So staff is looking for two council members to volunteer for some ad hoc committee to review the grant applications, and then help develop a recommendation to bring back to the council in August.
Was it the mayor and the vice mayor in previous years?
No. It's been like seven to one.
Yeah, it's been a different combination over time. So I don't think that there's been a consistency in the pattern.
You and I sat in it one year as well, Stan.
I'd be willing to sit on it again.
Me too.
I'd be interested also.
Well, is this my pick, or is this from consensus?
I think we should get council direction. So, there's a number of different strategies we could employ. Obviously, the decision needs to be made in public, but if four council members are interested, my suggestion would be that, dross, dross.
I think that's fine.
You know, we have actually picked council members to sit up here by drawing straws.
Really?
Okay, let me go out in the parking lot, so I get some straws.
Oh, no.
You have straws already? We have official government straws.
Well, my suggestion, my suggestion is, let's turn back to the CIP item. Well, my suggestion, my suggestion is let's turn back to the CIP item. We can cover it. We'll develop a, a way to arbitrarily pick.
Oh, it's easy. Oh, my God. The official council with all the straws.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll get it done. We'll go back to the CIP thing. We'll figure it out.
Okay. Let's, let's go back to item five then.
Rochambeau.
So let's go back to the CIP item and then we can circle back.
Oh, this is item four.
Four? No, this isn't four.
Well, before we go to that item, I just wanted to bring up the, the, to talk a little bit about the, the, the direction of the budget and in your budget message that we talked about at the last meeting, it's an increase of $400,000 or so. Which page is that on? Summary.
The city manager's message is found on page one of the first white tab?
Right. It was in a, it was in a slide that you had of, that you showed us last time and it shows that the, the budget is going up $400,000 this next year, increasing.
Just the overall budget number?
Yeah. And my concern about that, I think I brought it up at the last meeting, is that that's a high number and it's, even though our sales tax, property tax, TOT tax and the other revenues are going up and we have this extra money this year and we're facing challenges in the future, our staffing really needs to be looked at very, very carefully because that's our biggest expense and we're looking at adding two new peo, two other people this year. And my hope is that we're not, that we are going to have the attrition that we're thinking about so that we're not just constantly adding staff and adding to that number because that's our biggest expense in, in the budget.
Can I just clarify, we're only recommending one additional position, which would be the public works maintenance worker and then a temporary overfill of police officer position. But once that police officer position was vacated, the overfill would slide into that. So we're not actually increasing the number.
But with public works, we are.
By the one position.
And we were perhaps expecting someone maybe to, to leave or retire and so we would, that would, that would bring it back to the original number.
Recall with public works, the reasoning behind it is the addition of the, we have two new parks that are going to be coming online. Our public works crews frankly are stretched very thin right now. We were scrambling to get the beach open in time for Memorial Day this year. There's just a lot on their plate and I think, so the increase in staffing, I think, is simply due to the expectations of the community and the fact that we have, you know, 30% more parks than we had a few years ago. The idea behind trying to ramp that position down is, is when I look ahead, I share your concern about staffing costs are our biggest costs and how we're going to maintain those in the future. And so what we're going to ask council of direction for was to look into a street sweeping contract with Greenways and potentially adding a street sweeping fee into people's garbage bills, which would then let us allow us to ramp back because that's about one FTE's worth of work. So that, that's a strategy, but I just want to be clear with everyone that that's a future decision we would have to make and we'd have to bring all the information to council and we would do that in the next, you know, six to nine months.
I, I'm not crazy about contracting out the work. I like providing jobs and benefits for people in the community and that's not a, that's not a real high-ticket item, but just in general, I just want the council to, to really watch this carefully because, you know, it's this, it's the same city, it's the same budget, only the budget keeps growing and, you know, our revenues are good this year, but, you know, they may not in the future. And the only way we have to control costs is to not do projects or to not hire other people. So we just need to be really careful that we're not getting ourselves into a position where we're either promising more to the community than we can afford or, you know, if we, if we, or if we want to do something, we have to really understand the cost and how we're going to pay for that going forward. But it bo, it really bothers me to see this budget go from what it used to be 10, $11 million to 12 to 13 to 15 and that's, makes me a little nervous. So, you know, I know we're doing more, we have more revenues, you know, we've had tight years where, you know, we just didn't do a lot of projects and we didn't give any raises and we didn't do anything extra. We have extra money, but, you know, we're still the same two and a half square miles. So we just have to, you know, live within our budget sometimes and we have to be real careful about what that budget is and just to be careful with how we're planning the future personnel and other expenses.
I think, you know, I, I share your concerns, but I think realistically, you know, I, I can't say that we're the same. We're getting ready to open up Brisbane Park, which is an enormous park, which for, for the past, I don't know how many years have been fenced off and there's been virtually no maintenance in it whatsoever. And when I look at all these wonderful plans and all these features that are going to be in there and this, this pristine vision we're going to try to maintain in that park, I, I am skeptical if one extra person is going to be enough to, to, to handle that load and then you throw in McGregor with the dog park and the, and the pump track. I mean, we are the same two square miles, but we just took two vacant or pretty much virtually abandoned pieces of ground and turned them into public access points. You know, that's, that's a tough, I mean, that's, that's a realistic figure to me. So you go ahead.
In addition, I, I do want to note, this is a slide from our last presentation, is we took a, almost a 16-year view of staffing levels and, you know, the city is still below the levels it was back in, all the way back to 2000, 2000, 2001. So, you know, there are increased expectations on the part of our community. We have a lot more visitors than we had in 2000, 2001. The cost of doing business has increased dramatically in terms of just fixed costs the city has to pay. The expectation on our police department, the expectations on our planning department, the amount of compliance work our public works department has to do before a project can get out the door, all of those things have changed pretty dramatically in the last 10 to 15, 20 years. And so, you know, I, I think, I guess I want to push back a little bit on the narrative that we're in a position where we're significantly different for our, our little city than we were a generation ago. It's basically the same staff. So I understand, believe me, that's what keeps me up at night is, is when the next economic downturn comes, how are we going to deal with it? But unfortunately, there's no magic wand. You know, we have the option of doing less, we have the options of looking at contracting out, we have the options of talking about taxes, but there's, there isn't, you know, it's something we all need to be very cognizant of and focus on and I think it's something that the, the finance director and I really tried to drive home was looking ahead with some of the changes we see, we're, we're, we're very, recommending being very cautious.
John?
I have two comments. One, I was wondering, Steve, if you could give me an idea, what kind of maintenance goes on right now in the Rissman Park and what do you anticipate? And then I have another comment after that.
Well, today in the Rissman, we probably are there once every two weeks, checking for holes in the fence and maybe some graffiti abatement, pretty minimal. The wall does get tagged, we've been staying ahead of that, but I still think it's probably over a month, we're probably there, less than four hours. I anticipate that going up, daily visits, probably a couple hours a day, once we get a park there. So it's a significant change.
So I could easily see that stretching your staff. This is actually not for Steve, I'm sorry, but thanks for that response. Now, I'm not a doomsday sort of person, but I was really happy to hear that we have a new owner for the mall. And I'm wondering, and perhaps a lot of other people are wondering, what's going to happen when they start embarking on an improvement plan, you know? So in terms of our major source of revenue, short of property taxes, sales tax from the mall and that whole 41st strip. So that's a planning scenario and I don't know if you've had any conversations yet. Have they developed any plans that give us a, a sense of what may be coming? I think that's, to me, a major concern and is there any status there that you could guide us on or is that part of potential conversations?
So Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bertrand, first off, I do want to keep us focused. You know, we need to talk about how we're going to allocate the CIP for this year, but I think that your focus on the mall is well-placed. I have been in regular contact with the new owners of the mall. They don't have plans at this point. I have reiterated to them those very points that you made, that whatever project we need to talk about going forward needs to be financially sustainable and accomplish the city's goals. We need to look at maybe making sure that it's financially sustainable for the city, that it serves as an asset for the community, that we remain competitive as a retail shopping center. We need to look at maybe housing, you know, housing is a great need in our community and maybe that's a place for some of these things. So those conversations are ongoing. They don't have any plans yet. I know at this point, really, they're still, still trying to get a lay of the land.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm glad to hear that it's going on. That's my major concern at this point.
Mike, go ahead.
First of all, suggestion on that $100,000, rather than allocate it to the beach stairs, can we just hold it in suspense and consider it as we go along? We still have things to do like talk to the coastal commission, take a closer look at the wharf, consider measure D. There's a lot of things to do. We don't have to write the check for the stairs today. We can just hold it aside. We may lose four pilings in the winter, which means that the $100,000 we have in the wharf fund and the $100,000 here would just about cover it. So I think it'd be best just to hold that aside. At least that's my proposal.
How would we, would be the, the recommendation or how that would, where would, where would that money flow? Would it stay in the general fund? What would be the?
I, I think my recommendation would be we, we just create a new CIP project and call it, you know.
Coastal access.
Yeah. How's that sound, Steve?
That, and that, and that applies to the wharf as much as it does a pair of stairs.
I love that word, coastal access.
I bet the coastal commission likes it too.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
I have a little stronger stance on this. In fact, if, if we don't move it from there to the wharf, I'm going to ask you, you look for somewhere else in this budget to take the $100,000 and put it on that wharf. I will not vote for this, for this budget at all. So I feel very strongly that we have to show the community that we have, at this point, we have a concern about the condition of our wharf and that we're willing to invest in it. And so when measure O comes around, if we decide to use the wharf in that thing, we, we have a strong argument that we, that we have, we have stepped forward, that we, we really need to do some restoration work on this wharf if we want to keep it around. The beach stairs don't mean anything. They mean it's something for a few people, but if you watch the traffic that comes down that hill, people park up there, they're not going onto the beach. They're going down into the village or they're going onto the wharf. So it's not, it's not a big imposition in comparison to what would happen if we lost our wharf. And we're, we're on the brink now of losing it. It's just, we, we need to invest some money. And so where do we start? We start with this budget. So I, I'm just telling you that I, I won't vote for this budget at all if we go move. I'll ask you if you go find a $100,000 somewhere else if you're not going to do it from this beach stairs.
Well, I think that's where it needs to come from, but one of the big questions that's hanging right now is can we abandon the stairs with regard to the coastal commission or will they drop the hammer on us?
Probably not.
And until I get that answer, I'm a little reluctant to.
Okay, okay, Mike, but at the same time, if you're asking, saying, can we preserve the wharf or we preserve those, those stairs? I can tell you, the wharf.
The wharf, without a doubt. And yet, you know, we're, we're constricted by the state organization that controls our coastal access and if they say we have to make those stairs good, we're going to have to write the check for that.
Then, then I ask the council, go find $100,000 somewhere else in this budget.
Dennis, I love the idea of trying to find it, but I think you're going to, still look over that table there and I, I think we struggled to get to the budget we have and we have some serious commitments towards other CIP projects, which I think this town has been waiting a long time for and I think they're well allocated. I mean, I, I support you with the wharf as, as, as much as anybody at this, at this council, but I, I also support Stephanie. I think we feel the same strongly about those stairs. I'm willing to go with Mike's suggestion to, to put it on hold for right now until we get back from the coastal commission because that's going to be the big deal breaker. If that's a mandatory replacement, well, then we need to have those funds available. And if it turns out that it's not, then that becomes $100,000 we can talk about.
So it might be appropriate to take a strong stance right now on the wharf. We may wish we had and I think that's the thing we should be considering right now. So we don't know what's going to happen with S. We don't know what's going to happen with an extension. So if we have a history of taking a strong stance on the wharf, I think that'll do good for the public.
So I would toss out two options that I think could potentially address the concerns I've heard. One was, one is to basically rebrand the, the Hooper Stairs, a different kind of project that's a bit of a placeholder. I tossed out the term coastal access. We could call it the coastal access slash wharf project. I'm not sure if that would meet all the council members' needs and that would make it clear that it's set aside for improvements in that general zone. Another option would be to basically pull out of the facilities fund, which frankly is underfunded for all our facilities need and put it into the wharf fund. I think the wharf could be considered a facility already within the facilities fund and you could spend directly from it. This would be making a more explicit commitment to that, but I will point out the fact that this building, the community center, there's also competing needs there as well. So those are two different ideas you may wish to consider.
How much is the parking? How much is the parking for Jade Street Park? How much is that?
About $150,000 project.
I, I know the parking needs to be redone, but I could easily see putting that into the wharf.
I think that parking lot's in horrible shape. I think we need to, we need to do it as soon as, we need to do it yesterday.
But I'm not trying to keep the wharf going. I, I, we, we, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Okay. So we went through Vision Capitola and short of anything else, that has been a really good look at what the community thinks. And where did the wharf come in?
Last.
Right. So we have to take a strong stance on the wharf at an early stage in this discussion and Dennis is bringing it up and maybe this is a time to actually do that. So if we don't have a record of doing that and then we come three months, six months or whatever in November and say, we need to, all of a sudden now start taking care of the wharf, what's the public going to say? You haven't come forth and said, except for feeling, uh, doing a few paint jobs on the, thank you, Steve, on the bathroom and fixing a few pilings, we haven't really done anything. So, you know, maybe we really need to seriously think about taking a strong stance.
I think from staff standpoint, I think that the parking lot, the condition of the parking lot at Jade Street is, is a problem. I think it also reflects pretty badly on the city and.
It's a tripping hazard too. It's a, it's an accident waiting to, it's an accident waiting to happen.
I would, I would not recommend deferring that project.
I think we're distracting ourselves, I think we're distracting ourselves from what the point is and, 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 you know, I don't want to tiptoe around it. I think that the last council meeting, this council stood up and gave some direction about some polling that we're going to do because we realized that our wharf is in serious need and this is not a $100,000 repair. We're talking about three, four, $5 million repair. So I'm looking at $100,000 that might potentially fix a stairway that people use and we can argue all day whether 10 people or 20 people or 30 people use it, but it's another feature that we have in this town that's going to be left incomplete. So I, 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 I'm not going to try to fool anybody that $100,000 is going to come close to doing anything to repairing that wharf, Dennis. That wharf is a four, $5 million project to do it the right way and that's why we're preparing to embrace this community and say, look at, you, you polled on, on Vision Capitola. This is item number 30. We want to let you know that that wharf is not going to continue to be there because you're taking it for granted and it's time that we take a serious look on how to, to get that going. And $100,000 is, I don't think is going to make an impact on that. It's going to make a commitment from us and, and the citizens to say, you know, this, this wharf matters to us, but.
That's a good statement right there. You've just made an argument for delivery.
The statement for me is, no, I, I, I think we do ourselves a disservice when we have a broken project in town and we don't repair it. And, and like I said, I'm, I'm almost, you know, I'm, I'm very much convinced that the coastal commission could come back and say, fix the stairs, it's public access. And I strongly, I mean, I would do it even without that. So that would just be another nail in the coffin for that. I, I really like Mike's approach too. It's like, you know what, let's just put it in limbo right now. That's non-committal. I mean, we all are saying the same thing, it's just in different terminology. It's going to be $100,000 in a fund predicated on what kind of information we get and I'd rather work on facts from the coastal commission than about what I like or what someone else likes.
When a person goes back and looks at our budget and we ask them to, to, to put money into the fund if we would go, the extension of our tax measure, then you say, well, what have you done? Well, we haven't done anything, but we want you to, to invest. Yeah, that's exactly the story.
Dennis, Vision Capitola came back and half the people there.
Vision Capitola's surveyed me on nothing.
I'm just telling you, Vision Capitola, a lot of people said they wanted a bathroom in Monterey Park and we didn't put a dime into a bathroom. They said they wanted bathrooms in other, not a dime in this year's budget into a bathroom. So, so, I mean, and, and, and we, we can't kid ourselves. I mean, we're, a bathroom is a $250,000 item. I'm sure this council over time could figure out a way to build a bathroom, just like we've built other items, but we cannot figure out a way to do what's right for that wharf. We're going to need help to do that. So I, I, it's more than just putting $100,000 into the. I think we start by the, by, but the start we did, we were polling the people to find out, hey, we want to let you know that the wharf is in bad shape. We've had estimates done about what it's going to cost to fix it and we need you to weigh in on if it's something that you would consider, you know, being a partner in.
I'm sorry, I'm not going to support the CIP budget or the budget unless we find a way to put some money into the wharf fund. It's, it's something the city needs to do.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes.
Mike?
We're fortunate that due to our efforts in the last few years, we have a fully funded reserve, okay? It's, it would be easy for us to forget that we could even use more reserves. So perhaps not for this budget, but for future budgets, we should put a little bit of money away, we can go above the percentages that we've set. And even if we put an extra $50,000 into reserves, we still have the money. And it would be a good show for future tax measures, and it would also be a little, I, I feel more comfortable than I did with our past reserves, but I'd feel even more comfortable if we started bumping that percentage up just a little. Doesn't have to be by percentage points, it can be just by amount. And that we say, you know, $50,000, $100,000 each year, we, we bolster reserves, just a thought.
Well, and that's why I said at the last meeting, do we want to move money from the contingency reserve to the employee retirement reserve? What's that called?
The PERS reserve.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, could be others, I think...
I don't mind bolstering up the PERS reserve, I don't want to take anything out of contingency and emergency.
Yeah, I mean, would, I mean, would you feel more comfortable putting more money in there? How much do we pay out every year and do we need more money in there? I mean, how is it looking?
If anything has impacted our budget year by year, it's been Sacramento telling, giving us unfunded liability numbers. That has impacted us more than any full-time employee or any program or any street or any park, if you look back, in large chunks of 10, 20, $30 million. I wish it were the same city it was 20 years ago, but thanks to the PERS program and the folks that give us what our liability is, it's not. It's a different world.
So are you comfortable with the amount that we have in that fund? I mean, because we can move money, you know, we can put some more, put another $100,000 in.
Comfortable is a big word.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I don't think...
$100,000 isn't going to make you that much more comfortable, but if it makes you a little more comfortable, we could certainly do it.
No, I don't think either one of us is going to say we're comfortable with the amount of funding that we have set aside in the PERS contingency reserve, because I mean, I think when we look at the, the five, six, seven-year projections, they're pretty dire out of CalPERS. So, you know, for sure, if we could take the $100,000 and put it in the CalPERS reserve. I, I do also echo, you know, maintaining and maintaining what we already have is important, is important for voters, and showing, you know, the, the, the broken, you know, the broken window kind of thing demonstrates to voters that the city hasn't taken care of what it's already got. And so when we're talking about the community center parking lot, talking about the Hooper stairs, I think it's important for us to fix things that we already have. I, I, I think that one thing, if this helps a little bit, is, is that we will reach out to the conservancy, coastal conservancy, and see about getting some grant funding, and maybe being in a position where there isn't a line item in our budget that's already allocated funding to the Hooper stairs may make it stronger, the case, and say, look, we may be able to come up with some match funding, but we're going to need help to do the Hooper stairs because we weren't able to fund it in our budget this year. So we're happy to look at that. I guess that was a long way of answering and saying, no, we'd like to see more money in the PERS contingency reserve, but I'm not sure that this $100,000 is going to solve that.
This $100,000, money from, from the contingency reserve?
No, no, yeah, I, I think moving money from the, the contingency reserve is fully funded, that's where it needs to be, it's 15%, and that's set by policy. So I wouldn't recommend taking money out of that.
Jack?
So it seems like potentially we're waiting for a few things, conversation with the coastal commission and the coastal conservancy. So these things could affect our decision on this particular issue.
I think that's correct.
Now, I don't know what the timeline is on those two items, but could we wait for that, Dennis? Because I'm fully in support of...
I'm not, I'm not going to sign off on this budget until we have some commitment.
Gotcha.
Now, the stock and bridge assessment, we've already been through this once before. Is there, is there really a need, Steve, to do it again?
No, we haven't done it. We keep taking it out of, no, we have not, we keep taking it out of the budget.
The mayor's correct, we, we've had it in the budget fast and pulled the funding out, and it, it, from our local hazard mitigation plan, it was identified as the biggest hazard, so it didn't...
I don't know why I thought we did it, but I guess we...
We had it budgeted before, yeah.
I mean, we pulled $100,000 out of thin air, we, we're not out of thin air, but we've got this CIP proposed allocation list, and you could attack every one of those items, you could say, let's not repair the, the, the Esplanade Park wall, okay? And you could say, we have $100,000, yeah, we really don't have that $100,000. That's a, that's a commitment that we need to fulfill to finish that project. So I don't look at this as a, as a, every dime that's allocated there, I think is a reasonable allocation to, to improve some of our, those are all our facilities, that's a facilities repair list.
And, and you think that, that once the pier's gone, that's not a facility?
I think it is, Dennis, but I know that right now, if I ever could spend $100,000 on the wharf tomorrow, I would bring the machine out here, they'd cost me $30,000 to bring it in, they'd put in five pylons, and they'd go away, and it'd be another $100,000. And I think what we need to do is, part of the, the education of, of the citizens of Capitola is, is that Band-Aid after Band-Aid has been done on that wharf year after year, and, and we're not making any improvement, we're not giving it any substantial, you know, long-term stability. It's like, we, we have now had the appraisal of the wharf come to us, it was made clear to everybody here through the presentation that the wharf is deteriorating, lots of it needs to be redone, and, and, and what we said is, it may end up requiring, you know, that the, all the top boards are changed, the, the girders are changed, the beams are changed, and maybe a new building that's built out there. That's how we end up with new bathrooms out there. So I, I don't know where it goes, but I know that it's a great investment in the city of Capitola, and, and we may have a mechanism already in place where the citizens can support that. So that's why we had that...
But the city's not supporting it. It's supporting, what it's saying in this wharf is, is, we're not going to put any money into you, just, just keep going. If we don't pass this tax measure, we'll be in the same place today as we were next year.
Go ahead, Jack.
Maybe I'm looking at this in the wrong way because I'm getting caught up in the emotion here, but I think the community looks to us to come forward with a plan that's going to solve a problem. And the wharf is a problem that needs a, a definite plan to solve. So I am in support of putting money into it to show our intent, but the main thing we really need to do is, is have a clear plan so the community knows we're moving forward on this. So putting $100,000 in isn't actually doing that, but we are going to be having a session that's going to be totally focused on the wharf. And at that time, that's the time I think we should be proposing a clear plan to move forward on fixing the wharf, irrespective of any, you know, S or non-S. I mean, we're going to get some money one way or the other to do it, we just have to do it. So I think responding to the community's expectation of us is to develop a clear plan at the appropriate moment. And when is that scheduled, Jamie, that we're actually going to start developing that plan? We have a scheduled session for the wharf, right?
So the, the status right now is, is that we did it in addition to the contract with these affaires and peers? I'll let Steve give the update.
Moffett Nichols is doing a, the analysis on widening the wharf, and we'll take that and combine it with information we have about the buildings and the utilities and try and prepare reports, probably still two to three months out before we have that report finalized.
So you're, you're saying August, June, July, August?
August, yeah. August is the earliest, depending on how our other schedules go this summer, yes.
So I'm, I, I'm thinking that that would be the appropriate time to make that decision, how we're going to move forward.
Well, we're making a budget decision now, how we're going to spend our money for next year.
Right.
We're putting no money into the wharf. That's our decision. That's not a good precedent to set out the community, considering we're going to turn around and ask them to, to help us support a wharf.
So I, I've tossed out a couple ideas. One is, is to reallocate the Hooper stairs into a coastal access slash wharf project in the CIP. Another option would be to take some amount of money from the facilities fund and put it into the wharf fund. A third option is that with the sale of the mall, we expect about a $50,000 document transfer fee that we'll receive this year, which we haven't accounted for in the budget, which would increase our fund balance. So there is potentially about $50,000 that could be available in fund balance, which we, which we could allocate to the wharf fund.
How much money is in the CIP reserve? How much is there, Jamie?
The facilities fund?
Yeah.
The facilities fund balance, as projected right now, would be $130,000?
We allocated 80, so 120.
Mr. Mayor, you know, to, moving this, moving this to a fund for coastal access slash wharf is no different than our wharf fund now. We're not proposing to spend any of the wharf fund today, nor are we proposing to spend any of this $100,000. So we're talking about the same thing, we're talking about saving for wharf stairs should the coastal commission hold a gun to our head, because, you know, I'm, I'm not particularly high on the stairs, because I frankly have never seen anyone walk on those stairs, but that's just me.
I've never used it.
Right. Nor, nor, but, but I have seen thousands of people walk down the hill. So we're talking about the same thing, we're, we're splitting hairs, and it's not, you know, we're not approving a budget yet, but we are setting this aside, and I think that by the time we do approve this budget, we might have, you know, a stair discussion and make it move in the right direction. So I think we're, we're creating a problem before it is one.
Go ahead.
I just want to recommend, recognize Jamie in his comment. I, I think it's well, it's a well-placed comment that if we have a facility, we need to take responsibility for that. So I heard you say that, and I appreciate it.
So in order for us to wrap up this evening, we would like, you know, we don't have to wrap this up tonight, but, you know, as we go into our final budget hearing and prepare the budget adoption papers, to get a feeling for the council's direction. So my suggestion would be, I think there's a number of different options that have been tossed out as, as council looks for a motion and a second, and tries to give staff some direction on the CIP.
And, and Mr...
Oh, you're the mayor.
Is there...
Yeah, I did second that.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Can we go back on the motion, what the motion was?
The motion is to place this $100,000 into a coastal access fund until we find out how committed we need to be to the stairs. That's it.
And it was coastal access slash wharf project?
Yeah.
And I accept the second.
Second. Any other discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Dennis. And, you know, with regard to the transfer fee, either the, the PERS fund or contingency reserve, either one, but that's a perfect place to store money that we don't have yet that we expect.
Yeah. And the city treasurer would approve that comment.
On the discussion with the coastal commission, this don't come across as that, are you going to make us replace the stairs and not bringing the wharf in the picture? In other words, we have $100,000 to spend, so what's important to you? Ask someone what is important. Is the wharf important or is the stairs important? Let them, if they can weigh it that way.
And one more comment, Mr. City Manager, could you please direct or ask nicely for Public Works and the Police Department to make a casual observation if anybody walks, no, they can't say they walked on the stairs.
Don't do it anymore.
Maybe an inquiry as to people that are down there, if, when the stairs were active, if people actually used them? How's that? Okay? Because it's my apparent, my impression that I've seen people on the stairs, predominantly walking down, maybe not walking up, but...
Are they obvious, or, I mean, do people really see them?
I remember seeing someone walk up with a surfboard.